Be careful with us.
Collins.
I think I'll mention it.
I'd like to call to order the March 19th. Oh, he's not. I'd like to call to order the March 19th meeting of the City of Santa Monica's Planning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Chaco.
Here.
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
And Chair Tolkien.
Did she call?
She called me, Lawrence.
Yeah, okay. Planning Directors' Report. Oh, God, I don't know why I'm not hearing this.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. Thank you for having me this evening. There are a few items I wanted to highlight for you coming up. Particularly, our April 2nd meeting is canceled, followed by a meeting on May 7th where we will have a study session on Santa Monica Boulevard Safety Study, preliminary recommendations will be considered, and also the Park and Recreation Master Plan. We are planning a meeting on May 21st. This would be an important meeting as we get to the start of discussions related to the airport conversion project, looking at different scenarios. Adult-use cannabis recommendations will also be coming to you on May 21st. We have an ARB meeting, actually that just took place two days ago. The items they considered involve 601 Colorado, which was approved, 2307 Lincoln, which was approved, and 1318 Fourth Street was continued. We had a Landmarks Commission meeting earlier in the month, which included 226 Palisades Avenue, the landmark designation for that site. We've had a lot of meetings, as you can see. We did have a March 8 Council Budget Study Session, and it was a retreat on Saturday. We were there for several hours. Council had an opportunity to look at the 25, 27 budget considerations, just a preliminary discussion. They looked at their priorities as a council. In addition, we did have a council meeting, which included the extending a proclamation declaring a local emergency on homelessness, where they considered the homeless strategic plan. That was quite a bit of a discussion at the council meeting. There's also a few items I wanted to put in your radar related to some initiatives you're going to see us launch out of our department, really heavily focused on economic development. Council prioritized their goals for the upcoming year, and top three, in no particular order, included a really heavy focus on economic development, really looking at ways to help our business community with furthering business recovery efforts. As part of that, council formed a ad hoc subcommittee. In addition to that, we are also launching a citywide interdepartmental task force focused on economic development, and we're going to actually kick that off next week. This is going to involve quite a bit of looking at a way to have a new strategy for economic development. How are we going to attract businesses, fill our vacancies, really create an economic engine for the city, in addition to looking at a number of economic recovery efforts that we want to launch. And I will continue updating all of you, because I think anything we do in economic development, of course, goes hand-in-hand with planning, and I think it's important for all of you as planning commissioners to be well-informed of these larger initiatives we're taking on in the city. Thank you for having me tonight. Any questions?
I'm assuming that the April, we don't have any meeting on the 16th of April.
Yeah, that is looking also very likely that that meeting might be canceled.
Okay.
I know Ethan was...
We had none on the 2nd and none.
Yeah, we were polling about, because I know it's spring break week for a lot of folks as well, and we're not seeing, you know, potentially any items, but we will confirm that, you know, once we make sure that we don't have any items that need to be heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to make the announcement that anybody who wants to speak has to submit a chip to the Secretary of the Commission, and that should be done before we talk about the particular issue. Or if somebody wants to speak generally, they can do that as long as it's something that we can talk about and this commission talk about by law. We have to, you have to speak about something that's before us or will be before us, or is it our purview? So submit your chips now for whatever you want to speak about. Commissioners, do you have any announcements?
I'm just going to announce it. I guess I'm happy that April 2nd got canceled, because I was going to be in Dallas for a HUD Housing Community Development Innovation Solutions Seminar or Conference, and maybe I will learn some new innovative solutions, and I'll come back and present them to you when I come back. And then I also want to just highlight, I already talked to Ethan about this, but I have a bad schedule in late May and June, and I'm going to miss a few meetings, and I apologize.
Anybody else? No. We have one public input. Jerry Rubin. I don't think it's on, Jerry.
Okay. Turn my cell phone, too. Okay. Is it on now? There you go.
Okay. Hell, there it is.
Thank you very, very much, Honorable Commissioners, city staff, fellow Santa Monicans. Jerry Rubin, longtime resident. I'm an honored member of the Santa Monica Urban Forest Task Force, but I'm just speaking for myself today. I actually had a little note that I was going to bring, written personally by Mother Nature, but I left it home. She wishes you a happy spring equinox starting tomorrow. Today's the last day of winter, and in many ways, that's a hopeful sign of all sorts of rejuvenation. Our next Urban Forest Task Force meeting, you're all invited. If you care about the trees and want to support our good landscape people, it's at the Santa Monica Main Library on Wednesday, March 26, starting at 6:30 PM upstairs in the community room. And they're doing good work. I would like to just leave it at that for now and to say thank you for all your good work.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. The next is the consent calendar, I believe. And other commissioners have any exporte disclosures?
I do.
Go ahead.
Yes, I received a phone call from Jonah Breslau representing United here Local 11 regarding item 11A.
Oh, I mean, not exporte. I just wanted to talk about the consent.
Let's, the consent calendar, is there any, anybody wants to pull anything on the commission from?
I have a question of our city attorney about 7A. All those minutes that are from five years ago. They were very well-written. I felt like I was reading a gossip column from the 1940s. It was really fun, but, and some of it sounded familiar, but five years ago, I mean, I can't really...
Right. So, understood. Although it has been past practice for commissioners to only vote on meetings where they have been in attendance, that is actually not the requirement, it's not the purpose of voting on meeting minutes. You are basically confirming that you trust that city staff has put together meeting minutes that are accurate representation, and that's all you're doing. You're voting as a body, you're voting as a body for meeting minutes of the body, and it's a continuation of the body. You don't, you are not required to have been on the commission at the time or have been present at the meeting.
Okay, but my question is, it's, this is a vote of trust and not a confirmation of accuracy.
Yes.
Because I couldn't possibly remember what...
Yes, and some of you were not on the commission at the time as well.
Most, many of us.
Understood.
I was here, but, you know. Anyway, all right, just wanted to make sure about that. Okay, carry on.
Can we take a vote on this?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Yes.
Passes 60.
Okay. We can go to item 11A, I believe.
Chair. Before we open item 11A, could I ask the city attorney to clarify how we're going to handle my recusal on 11AD and 11AE?
So I'm going to kick it off to the, to the planning manager?
Yeah, so...
Before she explains, would you please explain your recusal?
Sure. So this is formal notice that I must recuse myself from, sorry, this is not moving properly, from item 11AD Resolution 25007 and item 11AE Resolution 25008, because I live within 500 feet, I mean, within 250 feet practically, of the subject property. And I will have to leave the room for the commission's discussions of those two specific resolutions. Since recovering the recusals, would this be a good time for me to ask, since I live within 1,000 feet of a potential large site, some of us, I may not be the only one, whether you want to confirm my understanding that I am able to participate in item 11AA?
Yes, based on your, the location of your property and the proximity to parcels that would be subject to lifting the cap off of the streamlining, it appears that the public generally exception applies to you. Approximately, almost 38% of the parcels would, within the city, would be within 500 feet of a parcel, subject to the proposed cap, and then...
Sorry, 38% of the residents, right?
No, it's 33% of the residential property. Those are two, there are two different standards.
Okay, sorry.
So under one standard, it would be 30, almost 38%, and under the other standard is 33%, both of which exceed the threshold under the FPPC's regulations.
Okay. Could I request that, to the extent, this is a request of the commission for the sake of maintaining, you know, our, all of our clearances, if, when we get into that conversation, there's a discussion of a specific site that needs to happen, that it be agendized for a separate meeting, and if there are multiple specific sites that need to be agendized, that we handle those in sequence so that whoever needs to recuse can recuse. But I don't want to get, if we get into the certain sites we could talk about, but if we get into like a substantive conversation on a particular site, it's going to get dicey for me. And it may be true for others.
Okay, well, thank you. And so Commissioner Landris has stated his recusal, and if you could please leave the room.
Start with Tina.
Yes, yes. So just to explain to members of the public that are present, due to Commissioner Landris's conflict, item 11A will be heard in two parts. We will be conducting essentially a mini-public hearing solely on the, the change to the zoning and loose maps for 2644 30th Street, for which Commissioner Landris has a conflict. So we will be having the staff presentation, taking public comment, and taking questions from the commission. The commission will deliberate and vote only on that zoning and loose map amendment. So any public comment at this portion of the hearing should only be related to 2644 30th Street. And then once the commission votes only on that resolution, then Commissioner Landris will be invited back into the chamber, and then we will then have the staff presentation for the remainder of item 11A. So again, we will be conducting 11A in two parts. So at this point, we will start with the staff presentation, again, only on the zoning ordinance and map amendments for 2644 30th Street.
So I'm going to start off, Rachel Quark, environmental planner, and then eventually, as we move on through this presentation, I'll hand it off to Ross Furman and Steve Muzakami, who will wrap up this presentation for tonight. So, starting off with 2644 30th Street, what's before you is the proposed zoning map amendment to correct this parcel from its existing zoning of R1 and its existing loose designation of single-family housing to NC, Neighborhood Commercial, for both the zoning and the loose designation. Reason why we're proposing this is because this was an inadvertent error as part of the 2010 loose update and the 2015 zoning ordinance update. What's on the site right now is actually an office building. So what we're proposing is not rezoning the entire parcel, but just a portion of the parcel that is occupied by this office use. So as you can see here, the portion in red is being proposed for a zoning of NC. This would be in alignment with the current zoning that is along Ocean Park Boulevard. It's also consistent with its current use, its current office use, which has been there since 1956. Again, this would result in a split zoning of R1 in the parking portion of the site and then NC on the office portion of the site. And that's it.
Chair, you didn't ask for recusals on this item. And I have, I'm not recusals, expartes. And I have some for this item.
So, so just to, just to be clear, this is a legislative item. It is not quasi-judicial. Your rules of order do not require expartes. You, you may certainly state something for the record if you wish, but just, just to be clear, for, for all of item 11A and item 11B, they are legislative items and do not require ex parte disclosures under your rules of order.
Okay, do you guys want to know?
You want to say something?
We're waiting with bated breath.
Okay. I spoke to Paula Larmour. She called me about this before our last hearing, when it was continued. And I shared with her some sandboard maps of this parcel, showing that this property had been an arena built in 1942, originally for Douglas Aircraft workers, and then was redeveloped in 1956, also by Douglas Aircraft, and may be the last extant building built by Douglas Aircraft in the city that I'm aware of. So that was just something I shared with her, and because I got nerdy about it. And then today, around 2 o'clock, I received a call from Nikki Kohlhoff from the Sunset Park neighborhood, who had basically the opposite position that Paula presented.
Have a question, first half?
Yes.
Steph, do you have a bigger blow-up of the zoning map? Because one of the things you said is it's consistent with the, with the zoning pattern along. And then what's the green behind? Is that the parking lot?
No, it's actually not green, sorry. It's actually just the porch, that's the actual parcel, which is, so the portion that is the green is the actual parcel. So the NC that you see that's in pink, those are the office uses that's fronting along Ocean Park Boulevard. So the parcel that's being rezoned is the green one, but, oh, sorry, not the entire parcel, but a portion of the parcel.
Like the first third of that.
Yeah, so the one in the red is the office building, and we're just rezoning that NC. The rest of it remain, would remain R1. So what you'll essentially have is, you know, a portion of it as yellow and then a portion of it as pink, if that was to pass.
I got it. Thank you.
I have a question.
No more questions.
I have a question. Just to clarify, the existing parking that is remaining on R1?
Yes.
That use is not jeopardized in any way by remaining on the R1? Is that correct?
Not that I were aware of, no.
And if that portion of the parking lot were to be developed in the future, it would have to be built as R1 and would serve as a buffer with the...
Yeah, it would have to remain as parking lot or it needs to be rezoned, if it was to be developed as anything else.
Thank you.
Wait a second, I'm sorry. What you just said was, it's part, it's, right now it's R1 and it's parking. You could build residential on there without rezoning.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
In accordance to R1 standards. So basically, a single-family house or duplex.
Got it, thank you. Okay, I guess.
Any other questions from the commission?
Nina?
No.
Do you have a question?
Nope.
Public comment.
So at this point of the hearing, we'll now move into public comment. We did want to point out that we received an extra public comment. It was not posted online, but it is available at the back of the room for any members of the public who wish to obtain a copy. So we just want to make sure that everyone knows this was passed out at the dais and is also available at the back of the room. If any member of the public wishes to make public comment, again, only on this change to the zoning and loose map for 2644 30th Street, we will be calling the request to speak forms. And if we call your name and your comment is not about the change of zone to the zoning map and lose for 2644 30th Street, then you can decline to comment and you can make your public comment later. Again, public comment right now is just for 2644 30th Street. So Chair, if you'd like to call the, the request to speak.
Dave Pan?
Rand.
What?
Rand.
Rand, I'm sorry, Dave Rand.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong number.
No? Jonah Breslau? Eli? Qu, Quasones? Quasones? Remnia Espino...
Maria Espinoza.
Maria Espinoza. Okay, next.
Daniel Legley-Lar? Xena Josephs?
Thank you. I believe you received a detailed email about this item from Friends of Sunset Park. Should be posted online. It was sent in before noon today. And I handed out a document that I found on my computer after that. You should have a copy. It looks like this. And it's from 2015, when the zoning ordinance was updated. And it lists some addresses in Sunset Park that were designated incorrectly, we felt. And on page three, it says 2644 30th, the original Google building and a large parking lot behind on the retail, behind the retail center in Ocean Park Boulevard, ARC GIS, R1, drafting district map, R1. This lot appears to be all one APN. However, it is R1 with a commercial building on part of it and a parking lot on the rest. So our requested action was to please confirm that this is all single-family, loose designation, and R1 districting. And we met at that time, it was July 2015. We met with the city manager. We had a 15-page letter that we presented to him, and we thought that this was straightened out. And so here it is again. That's very disappointing. Thank you.
Richard Millenazy. Mr. Denny? Gail, Gail Denny?
No.
No? Stephen Anderson.
Next item.
Paula Lorraine?
Paula Larmour.
I have a presentation. Oh, I have, you have my presentation?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I'll, I'll...
That's not it. Oh, can I start my time?
No, I'll, I'll reset it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Paula Larmour with Harding Larmour Kitchin Cozel, attorney for the owner of 2644 30th... Street. We urge the Planning Commission to recommend changing the property's loose and zoning designation to Neighborhood Commercial, consistent with its existing commercial use and prior commercial C2 zoning. Just to be clear, this is a separate legal parcel. It's not a split zone, but I understand those two parcels are tied to it. We are only talking about the part, the portion in red, 2644, in the red box. The surface parking lots are not being proposed for change. They're nice areas for kids in the neighborhood to roller skate on right now. The property owner unfortunately realized this zone change when they came to the city relatively recently, looking for options for future tenants of the property. When they bought the property, it was Zone C2. So they were extremely surprised to learn that this had become an R1 zone and that there were no, absolutely no allowable commercial uses on this property. This makes it a legal nonconforming use, and if the existing tenant leaves, say Suite A leaves, and they are not able to lease that suite to a similar commercial use within one year, they cannot lease that suite for another commercial use. They would have to then file an extremely expensive text amendment, come to the Planning Commission to ask for relief, and the City Council, in order to occupy their existing commercial office building with an office user. So we went back and did the research. And I sat through these 32 hearings in 2014, 15, where staff attempted, based on feedback from the neighbors and the, sorry, property owners, to, staff attempted to identify all the properties in the city where there was a prior zoning and new zoning and new loose, 2010 loose inconsistency. Staff said to you guys and the council that they had gone through to compare the maps and identified a complete list of inconsistent parcels. This list was about 115 parcels long, and 19 of the parcels on the list had this exact same situation, where they were zoned commercial industrial in the pre-2010 era or, and the then zoning. And then they had been given a residential loose designation. This is what the list looked like. 264430th fit this exact same situation, where it had been changed in 2010 loose, but was not brought forward for the commission and council to, to consider for the remapping in 2015. So the decision makers did not have the information before voting on the maps. Thank you.
Staff have, commissioners have any questions?
Just, I have one, just when you say the commission didn't have the information in front, just expand on that a little bit, because I think you kind of got cut off in your.
Sure, so a lot of these properties came up and the, this list was developed that show, that was supposed to show you all, and like, it said in, in the staff report that staff did this comprehensive list. So here's an excerpt of the list that showed when there was an existing zoning, if you can take this first example, it was C4. Then in the loose, the 2010 loose, it got changed to medium density housing. So then staff made a recommendation to you in this column, loose designation change? And then you, or, you know, the then commission and the then council went through really with a fine tooth comb to say, okay, this one use was C2 or C4. Then in 2010, it got changed to residential. What do we want to do? Do we want to change it back to the commercial? Do we want to change the zoning to residential to be with the loose? So that's what I mean, is that it wasn't identified on this list when you all went to vote.
Great, thank you very much for the clarity.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're still on.
We're still on the topic.
We got to vote and move this item before we hear the next.
Okay.
We're, we're still on public comment for the item.
No, we, well, I think, I thought we went through the list on Paul.
Oh, oh, are we, are we through the list?
I was just going to finish the public comments.
Yeah, he's going through the list still, I think, yeah.
Christina Navarro?
Yeah.
Next one. Oh, this looks like Heather Thompson.
Next.
I'm on 11A8.
And Danson Kohlhoff?
Oh, Dan.
That's it.
All right, good evening, I'll go ahead and start. I'm one of the neighbors across the street. Just wanted to let you guys know, this is an internal lot. It's pretty far into the street or into the block. It's really not part of a boulevard, this section. It was owned by Douglas, and this is, this was a Douglas building years ago. When the housing was developed, it was owned R1, I believe, so. And, let's see, it's kind of, it's kind of weird that Neighborhood Commercial would align with this neighborhood, because it could go higher, and that could impact it and with, sorry, catching my breath, with, I think, commercial, it would allow up to 110-foot tall mixed-use development that's right next to housing, single-family housing, and, you know, even with, even if it's, and it would have to be very clear, it does not cover the parking lot next to it, because that even goes deeper into the neighborhood. But, you know, kids play in there, it's, it's like a neighborhood, I hate to say it, but it's a neighborhood thing on weekends where kids are riding their bikes and they're learning how to ride their bikes. My kids learned how to ride their bikes. And it's kind of a walkthrough also, for a lot of us to get to the other side of the street, people on 30th, so we don't have to go, go all the way around to Ocean Park or to Pearl. That's it, I hope you keep it the way it is. Thank you.
I think that's all our comments, so.
Great, yeah, so with no further public comment on 264430th Street, we'll now move to the commission's deliberation and your emotion on this item.
I have a question first half.
Go ahead, Nina.
I'm just noticing this new handout we just got, which talks about when they asked for it to be R1, and that's dated July 31, 2015. And the list that Paula Larmour showed us, and that's up there, that she also sent us in a letter, is dated prior to that, March 18, 2015. So what I'm wondering is what might have happened after the Planning Commission that got it? You see what I'm saying? I'm just wanting to know what happened. It's all a mystery.
Yeah, so essentially what happened is, you know, that what the testimony you've heard is accurate, you know, that as part of the, what appears to have happened is in the, in the 2010 loose update, this parcel where the office building is sitting, so, you know, we, we understand that there may have been some confusion, unfortunately it's one APN, but it's really a portion of that APN. It's really just the office building, again, for clarity, it's not the surface parking lot, it's just the office building piece. That, in the loose update, was changed to single-family housing designation. There is no record of that being a deliberate act for, for any reason. And then that sort of carried through, and as part of the 2015 zoning code update, if those of you who recall that, you know, then there was, realized at that time that there was inconsistencies between the zoning and the loose designation. In this case, the zoning at that point was C2, right, the former C2 zone, it's commercial zone, its new equivalent is really the NC zone, as we know it now. But the loose designation was single-family housing at 2015. And the record shows that at that point, there was an effort to recognize these inconsistencies, and also that, you know, there were these inadvertent changes where you had commercial, existing commercial uses that didn't match the underlying loose zoning. You know, there were some parcels that were changed to like residential designations. And so there was an attempt to correct that. And then what occurred is it, it seems that this particular situation was missed, you know, we really couldn't speculate as to why, but it appears that it was missed at that point, because that building has always been there, and you know, there is a history of that C2 zoning. So because it was missed in that effort, then the reconciliation of like, single-family zone then became R1, single-family loose designation, excuse me, then became R1 zoning, because it was caught in that whole mass, you know, harmonizing of the loose and the zoning. Because it wasn't caught on this list, the C2 became R1 zone to match the single-family designation. And that's what's carried through to this day, and it wasn't realized until the property owner raised the issue with staff that they are now unable to actually retenant this building, because it could only be uses consistent with the R1 zone.
So basically, what happened, because I just, it sounds like both people are right, is that after that happened, it was still R1, because it was missed. And then the neighbors came forward and said, hey, this is R1, don't mess with it, but it had already happened and you didn't reopen it. And so it stayed R1. So everybody is right.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, what we're, again, it was the property owner that brought this forward and sort of highlighting this, you know, that.
Today.
Today, today, currently now, that this is actually causing, you know, issues with retenanting the building, yeah.
Options in this case.
Well, and, and, and so what is, the, the options or the recommendation of staff is to correct this situation, where, you know, you're essentially, I think correcting, you know, what appears to be an oversight of, you know, a, a property that has been in office use for decades, that clearly has a history of that commercial zoning, you know, there's no clear legislative record that says the city meant to do this in any way, to, to change a commercial building into single-family zoning. So our recommendation is to correct that mapping error that was, you know, made at this point 15 years ago.
I just wanted to get your opinion from what we heard from Ms. Larmour about the nonconforming and how that kind of really ties their hands.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, so, so that is accurate, that, you know, whatever uses there can continue, however, we do have rules around the continuation of nonconforming uses. So if it's been abandoned for a year, or if it became vacant for whatever reason, and there's not a continuation of whatever that prior use was, you know, then you would revert to the underlying zone, which is the R1. And therefore, you couldn't do anything other than the R1 zone, which is, you know, by necessity, very, very limited in its allowed uses.
Is this building currently empty?
I don't have that information. I, I understand that there are some vacancies, I don't know that it's fully vacant.
If, if the owner were to elect to do a remodel of the interior of the building and it were to remain vacant for that period of time, would that trigger the same difficulty in re-leasing to a commercial tenant?
It would, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have another question.
Yes.
When we did, at some point, we were, we've updated so many things for the housing element, and there was a correction of zoning related to that, that I believe that there were housing sites that were incompatible. Can you remind me?
No, yeah, so in that effort, that was looking at just the designations. We were not looking at existing use and matching use with designations. These are unfortunately, you know, with over 23,000 parcels in the city, you know, sometimes this happens, and, you know, it's, it's unfortunately not brought to light until, you know, a property owner might raise the issue in, you know, when they come to get a business license.
Can you just tell me, again, you said that you were matching, what were we doing?
For the housing element, we were, we were reconciling inconsistencies between the loose map and the zoning map. So let's say it was a, you know, single-family loose designation and like a NC zone, you know, in the, yeah, so we were, that's what we were doing with.
Okay, so that was different from this. I just wanted to.
Yep.
Should we just make a motion? Yeah, I say, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
So I want to speak to that just quickly, because this is really controversial issue. I mean, when, I mean, the, the whole A lots back in the, in the days have created a lot of controversy with, with the community, and the, the desire is not to have the commercial encroachment into, into residential areas. And I'm supportive, I'm supportive of that, but this seems to be a very unique situation to me, where there is an existing commercial building that's operating today, and if we don't change the zone on it, it, it really takes away its, its livelihood unless certain tenants stay there. So for that reason, I'm going to support this, but I do it a little reluctantly, because I do agree that it, it is, it is putting the zoning further back into that area, but it, again, I see unique circumstances here.
Yes, Nina.
There is one other option, which is uncertain, but because it is associated with Douglas Aircraft, and the area where Douglas Aircraft was, was completely redeveloped, further research could reveal that it is, in fact, the last remaining building that they built in the city, and it could qualify for landmark designation, which allows indefinite continuation of nonconforming uses.
I'd rather, I'd rather move the motion we have in front of us today, that's creating.
I know, I'm just going to put that out there, that that is a possibility.
Commissioner Chaco.
My main comment is, these types of situations are unfortunate, but they do, they're fairly prevalent when there's zoning changes, and I think staff's proposal is a, is a pretty balanced solution, where it addresses the immediate nonconformity, but it, it goes to the extent of not rezoning the entire parcel to leave a area that provides a buffer. So I feel quite comfortable with supporting it.
I agree with that as well. I, I think that the, the parking lot will remain as is, but we are allowing the owner of this property more protection to do any kind of remodel or rehab of the interior and also just guard against the, you know, the improbable situation where it'd have to stay vacant for any kind of commercial reason. So I think it's, I think it's a fair thing to do. And this site has been, you know, in, in, in its current form for 70 years, and so I think, I think we should just remain, allow it to remain as is with, with the zoning change.
Can we get a vote?
Commissioner Chaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
I just can't decide. I'm going to abstain, which I don't think I've ever done before.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Tolkien?
Yes.
Passes 4-1, and we'll invite Commissioner Landrus back into the chamber, and we'll continue with the rest of item 11A.
Welcome back to the fun stuff. All right, so moving on, so just to give a overview of tonight's agenda, we've already gone through the rezoning of the map for 30th Street. Now, we will be also moving on to 1331 Wilshire Boulevard, the rezoning of that parcel, as well as amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance. These amendments are being proposed for consistency with state law, as well as to implement City Council direction pursuant to their 16 items. In addition, we're proposing amendments to provide some additional corrections and clarifications as we have been implementing these zoning ordinance. So the first bucket, I'll start off with revisions for consistency with state law. The first revision is to the city's definition of a housing project. So as you may recall, in our state law updates this year, 1893 revises a definition of a housing development project pursuant to the HAA, the Housing Accountability Act. So revisions are being made, sorry, excuse me, to section 9.52, which adds in two new definitions for housing projects. This one relates to, as I mentioned, the, to the 50% of new or converted square footage is residential, and if at least 500 net new residential units are proposed. So this one, of course, means that if you have a project that is 500 units, and it's a 50% commercial and 50% residential, it is now a protected project under the definition of an HA, under the guise of the HAA. Similarly, the next one is concerns adaptive reuse. So if an adaptive reuse project converts 50, converts. if an adaptive reuse project converts 50, converts its square footage and at least 500, there's at least 500 net new residential units, and it converts, converts at least 100,000 square feet, and if it's a 50-50% project, meaning it's 50% commercial, 50% residential, and no portion of it is hotel, then it's a protect, then it's a protected project under the HAA. Also, the HAA new definition of a housing project includes farm worker housing. Another amendment that is being proposed has to do with density bonus law. This one just adds in new definitions for a shared housing unit and for a student housing development. Also, there have been new density bonuses for student housing projects, so that just got updated into our density bonus ordinance. Also, there's a, there's a new ADU law update, 1211, which we've talked about, increases the number of ADUs, detached ADUs that is allowed on an existing developments, existing multifamily site. So the proposed number of detached ADUs remains the same, or sorry, the number of ADU, detached ADUs remains the same for proposed developments. However, if there, if you have an existing development, state law now allows you up to eight ADUs, but it cannot exceed the existing number of eighty, of units on the site. So for example, if you have an eight-unit apartment building, the maximum number of detached ADUs you could build is now eight. Even if you have an 11-unit apartment building, it is still eight. Another revision that is being made is increasing the noticing requirement from 10 days to 20 days when there is a zoning ordinance amendment that affects the permitted use of a real property. Another amendment that is being made is adding community clinics as a ministerial permitted land use in non-residential districts. These are community clinics providing reproductive services, such as like women's health and things like that. Another amendment that is being made is to the SB 9, I guess it's now called SB 450 law, but this is to duplexes and lot splits in single, single-unit zoned parcels. So there's just some minor clarifications that are being made to make clear that if an application is not approved or denied within 60 days of the completed application, it will be deemed approved. Also, it removes the authorization to deny the SB 9 project if the building official makes a finding that it would have a specific adverse impact. And also makes clear, there was this left out in the last round of edits, we accidentally left out the provision that easements may be required for public works. Also, another, a couple of other edits that is not made to the code, but in terms of the online maps, there was a change in the definition of a major transit stop. So our online maps have been updated to reflect service intervals of every 20 minutes now. And then there's no revisions being made to SB 684. As you may recall, this is the law that allows for subdivisions of 10 units or less in the multifamily zones. SB 1123 extends it to single-family parcels. So I just want to note, this one doesn't take effect, SB 1123 doesn't take effect until July 1st. And so we are still awaiting HCD guidance, so no changes are being made at this time. And then with that, I'm going to hand it off to Ross, who will go over the ADU ordinance.
Good evening, Commissioner. So I'm going to dive into a little bit more detail regarding the updates to our AD, local ADU ordinance. So the revisions that are proposed before you are for consistency with the new state law, AB 1211, as Rachel mentioned, to align with the reorganization of the government code 66310, to reflect guidance from the new HCD handbook. And there are a handful of areas that we have some policy questions for you. So to do a compare and contrast, so these are the ADUs that are state mandated versus what we do existing and what the state now is requiring us to do. So currently, in our code, we only exempt that there are no standards that could preclude a detached ADU from being up to 800 square feet with side and rear setbacks of four feet and up to 16 feet in height. However, new state law and new HCD interpretation is now saying that on single-unit dwelling parcels and multi-unit dwelling parcels, these are the ADUs that the city is required to allow. And all of these can happen on one parcel. So in single-unit dwelling developments, you can now get up to three ADUs as required by state law. There is one ADU and one JADU that could be established through the conversion of existing or proposed space of a single-unit dwelling or an accessory structure. This was a little bit of a change for us. We always interpreted that the conversion of an accessory structure would count towards the detached option, but the state has made clear that conversion of any type, whether it's part of the existing house or the detached structure, would now count towards the conversion option. So those are the first two. And the third is one detached new construction with an ADU that has either four, has four-foot side and rear setbacks, and depending on its size, is anywhere between 16 feet and 18 feet in height. So state law is requiring, regardless of our standards, then in a single-unit developed parcel, we have to permit three ADUs. In multifamily, as Rachel kind of mentioned, in according to the new state law 1211, you have two options available to you. The first one is already existing, and it's the conversion of existing space up to one, to one ADU or up to 25% of the existing unit count. So that has stayed the same. But the revision is when it comes to the new detached, which have four inside, four-foot side and rear setbacks, and it's dependent on the development that is on the parcel. If it's a proposed development, you can include in that proposal two detached ADUs. Or if you're just adding ADUs to an existing development, it is up to eight, but you cannot exceed the existing unit count. So there's not a huge change in the multifamily, except for the addition of increased ADU ability on existing developments. So to kind of walk you through what this could look like, so you would start with an existing or proposed single-unit dwelling, and then to add your first potential two ADUs, you would convert existing space to a JADU, and then you could also convert existing space to an ADU. Alternatively, you can do a similar configuration where you convert a space to an existing, to a JADU, but instead of converting space of the existing single-unit dwelling, you can convert space of the accessory structure. So that is how you establish the first two through the conversion option. The next one is, you can add a new detached ADU, so getting you to three. So that is the state law mandated ADUs. The next section is where Santa Monica is going, adding bonus ADUs to incentivize the production of ADUs within our R1 neighborhoods and elsewhere in the city, to align both with state law, but to kind of give incentives for us to retain some amount of control over the placement of ADUs. So similarly, to start with this topic is the number of ADUs. So in the existing implementation, we currently already allow four. One was through an attached ADU, one was through a JADU, one was through a detached, both accessory structure or new. And one, if you remember, through our housing element program 4C, we are now allowing an additional ADU in the R1 zoning district as long as you de-restrict it as a rent, rental unit. Currently, the implementation of that program is for a detached ADU, which will come into a later policy question. On multi-unit parcels, we allow for the same conversion of one ADU or up to 25%, and only two new detached, regardless of there's a proposed or existing development. So that's what we do currently. The proposed implementation would align pretty closely to that and state law, but expand upon it a little bit. So the first one would be still the one ADU and one JADU through conversion, one detached new, and you see in the green, that would be the implementation of our housing element program to allow an additional ADU in the R1 zoning district. And as I mentioned, there will be a policy question after this slide to ask you more details on the implementation. Similar to the multi-unit dwelling parcels, we are essentially just proposing to implement state law with no change to the conversion and the detached to align either the two or eight, depending on the development. So to walk you through these diagrams, so you have an existing or proposed single-unit dwelling. You then to add your first potential two ADUs, you would establish a JADU within the footprint of the structure of the single-unit dwelling. You could also do a conversion ADU within the single-unit dwelling. Conversely, that ADU could also be through a detached accessory structure. Then you could add the new detached ADU. So so far, we're pretty much aligning with state law. And the last one is allowing that extra R1 ADU either through a detached option or potentially an attached option, which that leads me to my first policy question, as I first show you the comparison, as really we're just adding one more, is for a new construction attached ADU. So state law does not provide allowances for ADUs or JADUs established through an addition to an existing single-unit dwelling that does not include any amount of converted area. So you can't really expand the existing footprint to add a new ADU, according to state law. However, currently, the city does already allow this type. So the question is, should the city continue to allow this? And if so, should this new attached ADU be permitted only under that housing element program 4C that allows an extra ADU in the R1 if it is de-restricted as a rental? And as a reminder, currently, implementation of that program is only for a detached option, but we felt like this would be a good potential way of including a version of an ADU that we already allow, but not increasing the number of ADUs that we already allow. So the options before you are, yes, essentially continue to do this option and fold it in under that R1 program. That is staff's recommendation for ease of implementation and current consistency. Another option would be no, don't allow an ADU or JADU to be established through this kind of new addition to an existing house. Or an alternative would be, continue the current implementation of the R1 program to allow a new detached, if it's rent-controlled, but maybe even allow a fifth ADU through that addition. So staff's recommendation would be, yes, continue what we are doing and fold it in under the R1 program. So this is an example of what that could look like if the selection was yes, to kind of continue that implementation.
Jim?
Do you have a graphic that shows us the difference again between option one and three on that last slide?
I, you know, I don't have an option three, which is the alternative option, I think. I think what you would essentially do would be the first one on the left, but somehow there would be, it would be the combination of these two, actually. It'd be those two detached, the purple and the, it's red. But also, that second purple one on the right would be the fifth ADU. We're not proposing.
Ross?
Yes?
Do we have standards for the separation of these ADUs and the property lines?
We do. That will be in my next slide. So stay, bear with me for a second.
And which one on the right, which one of those are going to be de-restricted?
The purple would be the de-restricted one. So you are now giving the option of that additional ADU that goes beyond state law. We'd be de-restricting it as a rental. So whether it's attached or detached, the current property owner or future property owners will know that that was always meant to be a rental unit.
I'm sorry if I'm being dense, but I'm at the one on the right. Am I, please, am I actually looking at two, two purple?
If you combined that alternative option, yes.
And both of those would be deed restricted?
We could, yes.
Have we gotten any deed restricted use of this one?
I'm unaware of anyone utilizing our R1 program from the housing element to do the additional ADU. So-
Commissioner Hamilton?
So if they didn't want to, what we're saying, if they did not want a deed restrict, then they would just revert to the option on the left and have it be detached?
So the red one is the D, is the allowed under state law, the new detached, that we can't de-restrict. The purple one would be that additional ADU through the housing element program, that we already allow that version, the detached version. We're just basically asking, would you, would you be allowing us to include the attached version also under that program, so they can choose how to implement that additional ADU?
Just to clarify, when you say deed restricted, you mean deed restricted that it must be used as a rental unit?
Correct.
Not deed restricted as to the income of the renter?
Correct. We looked into that, but ultimately, for a variety of reasons, the rental decision what was built into the housing element program.
And there would be no bar on the homeowner renting it to their adult child, their parent, their favorite, whatever?
Right, exactly.
Long as it's a rental.
Okay. Themselves.
Do you rent it to themselves?
As long as it's a rental unit. So that was our first policy question, just to kind of keep the same options of ADUs, but still not expand the amount. So to continue in a comparison of the standards, between the existing and proposed for setbacks, there's been no change. So the existing is, if you're converting existing space, you get to keep whatever setback there is currently, even if it's non-conforming. However, if there's the new construction, so for like the detached options, you do have to do a four-foot side and rear. There's no change between current implementation, state law, or our proposed. Same with height. If you were doing an attached version of an ADU, you just get to match the existing height of the structure you're attached to. If you're a detached ADU, you would only get 24 feet in height and two stories. So there's no proposed changes to that implementation. For floor area, currently we exempt all ADUs and JADUs from floor area. That will lead me into my second policy question. And as far as size, the only real changes between the two are, the minimum size was reduced as one, we have to have a minimum size that allows an efficiency unit. An efficiency unit is 150 square feet, so we had to reduce our 220 minimum size to 150. And the only other change was actually based on council's direction of a two-plus bedroom ADU. Instead of it being dependent on parcel size, whether you got 1,000 square feet or 1,200 square feet, council's direction, I think back in September, was to allow for all two or more bedroom ADUs to be up to 1,200. So that is the only change, and that was based on council direction.
Tina?
So we have to have the minimum at 150 square feet for all the ADUs by state law?
Correct. It has to be allow an efficiency unit, which is defined as 150.
Have you ever been in an apartment that that's small?
I have not.
I have a bedroom in my house that that's, that's that small, and you can't fit a queen-
Understood. We're aligning with state law to, we have to allow a minimum. I mean, a lot of our, a lot of our proposed changes for what I'm going to call our locally permitted ADUs was to take state law and build off of it, to maybe allow a little bit more leniency or a little bit more height, so we can get back something in return. Because the other option would be, they could always just do the state mandated ones, which we are essentially hands-off if they meet very few requirements.
Sean?
So I just want to say to Ross and Tony that I'm having PTSD flashbacks to the anti-mansionization work in R1, and if you are too, I, I feel you.
That's why there's a policy question coming.
Okay. So it's, I want to ask a question before we get to the policy question, which is, when we fought that fight, one of the things that we spent a lot of time on was maximum parcel coverage-
Correct.
-of the main house. And part of the idea around the exemption, when we were negotiating over whether it was 800 square feet or 1,000 square feet or 1,200 square feet, was the idea that the maximum square footage of the main house, right, we didn't want it, we were willing for it to add up to like six, 55, 60% of the parcel, but we didn't really want it to go higher than that. With the number of ADU, at the time, we were thinking about one ADU, right, and maybe a JADU, but, okay. So with the number of ADUs that state law now provides, you can cover 100, if you, if you don't, if you would continue to exempt ADUs and JADUs, you could end up with 100% parcel coverage, couldn't you?
I don't know about 100%, but it could definitely exceed the amount that we had originally had in the R1 that we then reduced during that mansionization effort in 2019. And you are correct, the exemption of that ADU at the time was when state law only allowed and required us to do one, one ADU, one detached ADU. In the last five years, state law has changed dramatically in a lot of areas, but especially in regards to ADUs. So, you know, they slowly added one more and another one. And then we had the housing element program to meet our goals of affirmatively further vary housing in the R1 districts. And so now, given the amount that the number of ADUs have increased, we are reconfirming the commission and eventually council's position of, would you still like to exempt all ADUs from floor area? I say this also, though, that if we are going to add, let's say you'd voted to not exempt them from floor area to some extent, that may push people into the state law versions that exempt them from floor area.
Ross?
Yes?
This is kind of craziness. I mean, we're, we're saying basically that we're going to get sloppy about developing four or five units on this property without, we might as well just rip down the existing buildings and start over again. I mean, it's nonsense.
Roman villas. It's just Roman villas. You just build a wall around the, at the, at the property line, and then you stick little inbuildings inside and call them ADUs.
I'll say that, you know, since state law has started changing, you know, and allowing more and more ADUs, realistically, staff's opinion is someone cannot fit that many ADUs on their parcel realistically. So, I mean, yes, they could if they did it 150 square feet, but I don't, that is not what we're seeing. We typically see people, you know, get to the maximum size they're allowed. I think in my experience, I've never seen more than two ADUs, maybe like a JDU and one ADU. That tends to be the maximum people are willing to kind of develop their parcel, at least from what we're seeing currently, given that most people still want some backyard. So I can't promise you that four wouldn't happen at some point, but it seems, it has not happened yet. I've not, I've not have seen three. We've never seen anyone take advantage of our housing element program that got them to four. But nonetheless, because state law allows three, and because our housing element requires us to allow an extra one, we're at four.
You're, you're at, you're at four ADU JDUs and plus the single family home. So it's five units total.
Correct, yes.
Would, would there ever be a situation where somebody could, you know, tear down the primary residence, rebuild it as a smaller primary residence in order to fit an additional four units?
They definitely could. I've not seen that in the five years since we've kind of been seeing this ADU change. But yes, there is a way to get to four, sure. That's just not tends, that doesn't seem to be the, what we are seeing in our R1 districts at the moment.
Well, this law, how, how long has this law been in effect with the four?
To be honest, well, the four, the fourth one was our doing back when we had certified our housing element in 2021, 2022, sorry. Wow, that wasn't that long ago, but honestly, as far as how, when did they get to three? It, it's, it is hard to say because some of this has been facilitated by HCD's interpretation. So for example, for a long time, we assumed that the conversion ADU was always within the main house. HCD's new guidance is no, conversion is also the detached structure. So we always thought you could only get one detached ADU, no matter how you established it.
Right.
Now, HCD is saying that that converted ADU is the conversion path, and you still get another detached. So a lot of these changes have been facilitated over various state laws, various interpretations. And this is ultimately where HCD, who has enforcement authority, is now directing jurisdictions. And we have seen that kind of across the board of California, that this is like a consistent message that HCD is providing various jurisdictions.
Nina?
So these 150, these bedrooms. So I, we have some requirements that if the ADU or JDU doesn't have a bathroom or a kitchen or whatever, that it has to be open to the house. Is there a way we could incorporate at least a threshold that if it's 150 square, if it's under 220 square feet, that it has to have access to other spaces on the property or?
So right now, JDUs are the only ADU that could potentially have internal access between it and the main structure. And state law has come in and actually said that if the JDU doesn't provide its own separate bathroom, then it's required to have internal access. If it does have its own separate bathroom, I guess the property owner can choose whether to have an internal connection or not. As far as could we up that size for our local ones, because we couldn't change that for the state mandated ones, because those are untouchable essentially. The answer is, I, I, yes, I believe so. But again, I caution us, we want to locally incentivize our version, because for example, state law doesn't, doesn't take into account front yard setback. Where our local ones, if you're willing to not do the front yard setback, we'll give you a little bit more height, we'll give you a little bit more flexibility, so we could still ask for a couple of things as well, where state law doesn't give us that ability to do.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just still trying, I'm still really hung up on this. I mean, I just have to say, I once rented a hotel room and when I, and it was a very low price. And when I arrived, it was about 150 square feet, and there was a twin bed, and along one wall was like a sink and a toilet and shower. And I could literally sit on the side of the bed and wash my hands. And is this the idea of a home that we're providing for people? I mean, is this really a home or?
Nina, you're, you're, you're beating him up about state law.
I'm sorry.
And the fact of the matter is, it has a, it has a house, it, the person would end up having a roof over their head and a bathroom as opposed to living on the street. That's what the city's trying, that's what the state's trying to accommodate.
But they're not, yeah, but that's not what these will be. They'll be rec rooms and wine cellars.
I would say the times we have seen ADUs.
Well, then don't worry about people living in them, if that's what they're going to end up being.
Well, then we're just blowing up our zoning for rec rooms and wine cellars.
No, the state is blowing it up. I've been in apartments of similar size of 150 square feet, some a little bigger, some a little smaller in the affordable housing space. It's very small, I'm not going to lie, but a well-designed, well-conceived 150 square foot unit, if you have higher ceilings and larger windows and access to the outdoors, can seem, can be livable. It's not for everybody, but it is, it's doable. And especially in other parts of the world, like in, in, in Asia, for example, 100 square, 50 square foot apartments are not uncommon.
I just want to remind the commission, we are still in the middle of the staff report. And, and, and no, you, you are welcome to ask clarifying questions. I just want to, yeah, we haven't gotten to public comment or finished the presentation.
I do have a clarifying question. So just to clarify, related to the 150 square foot minimum requirement, is that something we would have to do even for the fourth extra unit that is not mandated on the state law?
No, given that that is a very much a local ADU option, I would imagine the commission has more control over that one. So I think, yeah, you could potentially add that extra layer on that one.
And that's the only one that is required to be deed restricted for rental?
Correct. And it's the only one that is not somehow connected to a version via the state mandated ones.
Ross, I have one, one question.
Okay.
Does, do we have to, do, if you were developing this site, you have to go through architectural review board?
It is not. So all ADUs are ministerially approved. So essentially in Santa Monica and throughout the state, they essentially just go straight to plan check. There is no designer view, nor do we have designer view in our R1 neighborhoods, predominantly in most of our R1 neighborhoods anyways.
Because this is an architect's nightmare. I mean, if you're trying to do something organized on a, it's just, you know.
I think the state is just allowing for the option to include these units. As I mentioned, we are not seeing over the last handful of years that they could have already been doing four units. I've not even seen three, but it's, it's possible.
Yeah. Maybe the owners are smarter than we think.
So, any other?
Do you want to finish?
Yeah, yeah, I have a lot more to go through. So that leads me to a policy question, and it's more of a reconfirming policy question that to incentivize ADUs, Santa Monica has exempted ADUs and JDUs from floor area since 2020. However, given council direction to increase the ADU size to 1,200 square feet for those two or more bedroom ones, and just given the increase in the number of ADUs that are required pursuant to state law, should the city continue to exempt all ADUs from floor area? So the options in front of you are yes, continue. This is our staff's recommendation, given it's consistent with current practice. It continues to incentivize ADUs. And if we remember, we do have a goal of getting 47 new units per, on average, per year in our R1 neighborhoods. We need to find ways for people to add more units, or we will not meet our goal. And therefore, the state might require us to come up with another program. So for those reasons, staff is recommending yes. However, you could say no, exempt only the state law required ones. Or an alternative is maybe you only allow, you exempt a certain amount, a certain number of ADUs, or maybe a certain amount of square footage. I caution the square footage one, because if an ADU somehow like falls in the middle, so some of it's exempt and some of it isn't, but staff's recommendation is yes, continue the current practice.
I have a quick question about that. What's the city's current rate of producing units in R1?
Right now, in, I think in 2024, we did over 100 ADUs in our R1 neighborhood, or at least we permitted 100 units. I can't guarantee all those were built. But right now, every year since we've been tracking these, especially since our housing element was certified, we have well exceeded our 47. But eventually, the ability to continue doing ADUs will diminish in our R1 neighborhoods as parcels are already, had already done them. So that number, I would imagine, could shrink in time. But right now, we have a healthy buffer.
So you're, you're talking about our RENA goals, right?
So I would, ADUs weren't really used, I mean, they do count towards RENA, but that 47 unit was really for affirmatively furthering fair housing. It was getting more diverse housing options into our R1 neighborhoods. We did this in kind of a two-pronged program approach. One was the additional ADU, and the other one was expanding the provisions under SB9 at that time to, for larger parcels to do more development than what SB9 had, you know, the limit that they had established there. So it was a two-pronged approach. I would say ADUs at the moment is very much the one that's keeping us on track. Hence why the option, staff's recommendation is yes, as we wouldn't want to jeopardize those numbers.
But for the city to be compliant, HCD is focused on our RENA numbers, which is just units writ large across the city in a for, affirmative, affirmatively approving for housing, or I can't say it right now. That is a, something we would, we, we want to have and need to have to hit our goals as a city, but are we being held accountable to that by HCD? Okay.
So yes, they are very much tracking RENA, but they're also checking in on implementation of our programs. And this was a mid-cycle check-in that I believe we are, this year is the mid-cycle check-in, and if we had reported back that we weren't hitting 47 units, I'm going to assume, make an assumption here, that they would ask us, well, what are you going to do to meet that goal?
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I have just a question on your policy question. So I'm leaning towards the yes on the first one, but if we went to an alternative of exempting some, how does that, I think you said you, you wouldn't want to divide up a bill?
Yeah.
You, but just for the fun of it, let me ask this question. So the state allows a minimum of 800 square feet, and we're going to 1,200 or something to that effect?
The 800 square foot is for the new detached, but we still have to allow the conversion ones. So conversion, I think it's the state's mind already kind of has been counted in towards floor area, so converting, it's not really changing the numbers. But the state, there is the only one that the state puts a hard number on is the new detached that is 800 square feet.
So in theory, we could say anything over 800 square feet counts as floor area, but then we're shooting ourselves kind of in the.
Correct. Implementation would be difficult as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify on that, could we, I mean, this is hard to enforce, no matter what we do, and state law is state law, but could we, and I'm thinking about the 150 square foot ones.
I would say I've never seen one that small.
Well, no, 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 but, but what I'm curious about is exempting the deed restricted one creates, if you will, an incentive to build the deed restricted one.
It definitely doesn't cause an impediment to it.
So is there a pathway where right now we're exempting everything? Perhaps what we could do is, and I would argue for this, we exempt 1,200 square feet so that we're sort of consistent with the 1,200 number across our code. But then beyond that, we only exempt the deed restricted one as a local bonus.
So would you, are you saying that you, let's say someone established two ADUs, does, does each get a 1,200 square foot exemption, or them added together, we're only exempting a cumulative 1,200 exemption? This is where.
I know.
It gets difficult, and when we starting to split, you know, what, some of it's exempt and some of it isn't.
Can I finish the, let me just, can I just say on that? I, I remember we had this discussion once about roof coverings, and Mario Fonda Bernardi made the great point at some point that, look, we're not, we don't care about the size of the covering, we care about having enough space around it. So, right? So I, I guess my response would be that. In other words, on a tiny lot, right? I wouldn't want to go above 1,200 square feet, because suddenly we're creating that overbuilt, totally, you know, parcel line to parcel line project. But if somebody has 10,000 square feet worth of parcel, sure, have fun.
Originally, we did have, not exactly, we're talking about kind of that 10,000 square foot threshold, where for the two plus bedroom ADU, if you were under 10,000, you only got 1,100. But now, and if you were above 10,000, you got a 1,200 square foot ability to do an ADU. Council's direction was to remove that parcel size threshold and allow, if you can do it, any two-bedroom ADU that is established, whether that is through conversion or attachment to get up to that size.
But that would be one, that wouldn't be five or four.
For the detached, yeah.
For the detached. So, yeah.
I have a question. What's the height limitation? I know you've, it's an existing building in one place, but what if, what if I'm building a separate two-story?
So currently, and what we are still proposing, is for a detached one to be no greater than 24 feet in height or, and two stories.
Right.
And that is what we currently do.
You could have two units and a detached.
Yeah. And it could be in the same footprint, just one on top of the other.
Exactly.
So you could have a, a single 2,400 square foot, two-story home in the backyard, and each would qualify as a single ADU?
You could have a 1,200 on the ground and a 1,200 on top, being the two detached that you can do.
Yeah, yeah. Like a whole brand new home. It's a whole new take on accessible, accessory dwelling units, yeah.
Any more questions on this policy question? So to continue the comparison of standards, so the first leads me into another policy question. So this is expansion of conversion. So currently, if you, you can only, you can only expand, if you were converting an ADU from existing space, you can only can expand that up to 150 square feet into a non-conforming setback, but only for ingress and egress. And that is largely state law implementation. We, however, currently allow that you can actually expand beyond the 150 square feet as long as that new square footage would comply with the code, meaning you do need to make sure you have the four foot side and rear setbacks, for example. The policy question is, we are not proposing any changes for when you're converting space, and especially when you're needing to do an addition, let's say to a front yard setback that has a current garage. If you converted that to an ADU, state law and us are only allowing that to expand 150 square feet, because that would be the expansion into a non-conforming location. We want to confirm that you are still comfortable with allowing us to expand conversion beyond the existing footprint, as long as that expansion met the code. So that would be like the four foot side and rear setbacks, maybe it's the height as well. That is the current implementation, but state law doesn't require us to go 150, so we want to reconfirm with you all that, that implementation is still permitted. I'll go to that policy question in a second. I'll just go to it now. So that leads me into the policy question. So as I said, state law only requires a jurisdiction to allow an ADU or JDU that is converted from existing floor area to expand the footprint of 150 square feet for ingress and egress purposes only. Currently, Santa Monica allows you to expand beyond the 150, as long as the new addition complies with all standards. So we see that a lot where there's a detached garage, they convert it, but they want to make it a little bit bigger, because a garage typically is only around 400 square feet if it's a two-car garage. So that new square footage that they're expanding doesn't get to continue to have non-conforming setbacks. They have to do conforming setbacks, and then we allow you to expand up to the size that a JD or an ADU can be. So the question is, to, to continue to incentivize ADUs under Santa Monica's local implementation, should the city continue to allow this expanded conversion beyond 150 square feet? Yes is staff's recommendation, which is to continue to do what we already do. And no would be, no, do not allow any expansion beyond the 150 square feet. Any questions on that one? Okay.
If that was ever an issue, couldn't the homeowner opt to just tear down the garage and rebuild new?
Yes, but state law envisions when you do that, that you can rebuild. So if you want to keep those non-conforming setbacks, though, you could rebuild to that same footprint. So therefore, garages, for example, are allowed to be built on ones, like with a zero-foot yard, foot setback on one side.
So, okay, I got it. So if you did rebuild, you'd have to then bring it to the proper.
If you wanted to build a bigger one, then you wouldn't get that any longer.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That leads me into a couple of design standard ones. So currently, we require a separation of ADUs from any primary unit. This is both for single-family and multifamily of six feet. That number, no one really, that number, we're not sure exactly where that came from, if I'm being honest with you, but it has been a longstanding separation requirement when we built our ADU ordinance way back in 2017, when state law really started changing from what we considered an accessory structure. So that number was largely a carryover. State law has questioned whether that number could create an impediment to creation of ADUs. So we are proposing to change that number to four feet to align with the same setbacks that are required on the side and rear. We're basically just wrapping that four feet around the whole building. That is our proposal. We wanted to tie it to a number already in state law, but still provide a certain separation. I do want to point out, though, when you do conversions, you, that is, you only have to provide, you know, for fire and safety code. So there are times they can get closer, that's typically via the conversion route. So this would really only apply to the new construction detached.
Ross, has this been clear with the fire department these days?
Four feet is enough to satisfy the fire department. Anytime you get kind of less than four, especially less than three, that's when you stop having windows, or you can't have a certain amount of openings. So four, we feel like there still provides a certain level of separation, but it still allows you to utilize all elevations of the building.
So when we, if I may, when we did this six years ago, what was this? Six, five, five, six years ago, it was a long conversation about separate entrances. We established, I remember that the, the planning commission was in favor of a degree of flexibility, but ultimately council came back with a fairly strict requirement for really separate entrances. I know this is on, this is around spacing, but I just want to make sure. State law has not preempted us on.
State law requires separate entrances.
It does now, okay, okay.
It has for a while, so I'm not sure when that was.
Well, no, I think we were actually talk, we were talking about preventing interior access.
The only, pursuant to state law, the only ADU that can have interior access is a JDU. And state law is very specific about that. All other ADUs, whether attached or detached, but attached.
Right.
Cannot have internal connections at all, and have to have an existing, or sorry, have to have an exterior separate entrance.
And how do we define in local ordinance or in state law, walkways, imagine like a?
Like how to get to it?
Yeah, like a, like a, like a, I don't know, like a grape arbor that's, you know?
We do not.
We would not consider that in a?
No.
Would we consider that a connection or would not?
No, we would only consider connection if there was literally an internal connection in between the primary unit and an ADU. You could provide any external connection, any pathway you want, whether that is covered or not, to that individual external access.
Okay.
So the other designs standards, so this is the, when you are doing an attached ADU, let's say an attached ADU on the second floor of a single-family house, we are stating that the applicable stepbacks should apply. There's no change in our recommendation. We want this ADU to feel like it is part of the house. And then the last one that, for the design standards, it also leads me into, I believe, my final policy question regarding ADUs, is regarding upper-story outdoor space. So currently, for upper-story outdoor space, if the ADU is located within the R1, and it's detached, you only get 35 square feet of upper-story outdoor space. So any second-floor balcony, you only get aggregate of 35 square feet, let's say if you have two. In all other districts, we give you 60 square feet. There are limitations on what elevations those second-floor balconies can be located on. Typically, it's, let's say if your ADU is up in a corner, you cannot put them on the elevations that would then face onto another property. We wanted to locate them more internally to the parcel, so looking over into the backyard potentially. And there was a limitation that there was no roof deck on top of a second floor. So a lot of these, so one of our policy questions is, state law only, that's, oh, so currently, upper-story outdoor spaces for detached ADUs are limited to the limits that I just explained to you. These provisions were implemented back when ADUs were the only development that was allowed to be within four-foot side and rear setbacks. State law has changed, whether that be through SB9 or SB450. It also has changed in our multi-unit zones, now that we can only require four-foot setbacks when you're, let's say, for an ownership project of 10 or fewer units. So what I'm getting at is there is now a lot of other developments that can be just as close to property lines as ADUs can, but they don't have the same upper-story outdoor space restrictions. So we are asking the question, given adoption of more recent state laws and the other types of developments that can be just, the same distance that ADUs can be from property lines, should we now just default to what the underlying zoning district allows for upper-story outdoor space? I can go into a little bit more detail of what those are, but it was more for staff's recommendation is yes, to, for ease of implementation, why are we treating ADUs differently than, let's say, other developments on the parcel, especially when they can all be potentially the same distance away now? A vote of no would be keep the existing limitations, and I guess I should have done an alternative of maybe a combination, maybe relax some, but keep other restrictions. Any questions on that one? Okay. And lastly, for parking, there's been no change. We require zero parking for ADUs citywide, whether that be through new construction or if you're converting the garage, you do not need to replace the now displaced parking. That is citywide, so there's no change that we are proposing. And impact fees, we do not collect any impact fees for ADUs, and we are continuing to propose that as well for the new amendments to the code. So now I move into the next section, if, if you're okay with that.
Can we respond to your policy? I don't know, we have to wait till.
Yeah. So now we move into the section of what changes are in front of you that were based on direction that we have received from city council. So here is a table to kind of summarize all these, and we're going to dive into two of them in a little bit more detail. But the AA streamlining, if you remember, there was a one-acre cap for when a, a housing project could be eligible for an AA versus a development review permit. City council's direction on December 17th was to remove that one-acre cap, which ultimately deleted the city's definition of a streamlined housing project. So now essentially, a housing project on any size site, as long as it meets the definition of a housing project, can receive a streamlined administrative approval application.
I have a lot of questions about this, but maybe I can wait till you're done.
Sure. So that was, again, this is all council's direction. Speaking about ADUs, that, that increase for 1,200 square foot, two or more bedroom ADUs, was a council direction that was provided on October 22nd of 2024. Council also directed some modifications to our newly created large-site incentive program for Bergamot area districts, which Steve will go into a little bit more detail. So I'll let him cover that one. So that was, our revisions are to align predominantly with council's direction. The next one was permit extensions, which on February 11th, the council directed to allow any project that was issued before January 6, 2025, to be given an additional two years to their expiration date. So we have incorporated that. I do want to note that in that direction, there was also extensions directed for development agreements and building permits. Ultimately, those are not codified into our amendments, because if someone wanted to allow for that additional extension in their development agreement, we would do that through a minor modification of that agreement. And if there was an extent, if for the extensions for the building permits will be folded into Article 8. But ultimately, everything that was approved or issued before January 6 of this year will get an additional two years to start their project. And lastly, this is for lot splits and duplexes in single-unit zones. Council's direction was to remove the owner occupancy requirement, to clarify the eligibility of vacant and demolished parcels. So essentially, that was to make clear that vacant parcels are eligible for this provision, and even parcels that have required some amount or all amount of demolition. They also, similar to ADUs, wanted to guarantee that you could always get at least two units of at least, that says, that's an extra zero in there, of at least, sorry, of at least 1,200 square foot in size. So if someone went through this lot split and duplex process, whether they lot splited the existing parcel or not, we had to make sure we had no standard that precluded them from getting at least two units, so a duplex, of each unit being 1,200 square foot in size, which there will lead me to a policy question. But lastly, before the next, before I ask that policy question, they also wanted to ensure that each unit got at least one roof deck. Currently, this is typically, we see these in the R1s district, we limit roof decks to only one per parcel. Again, that was implemented when in the R1, you could only really do one unit. Now there is potentially a pathway to get a duplex in the R1 parcel. So council's direction was to allow each one of those units to get a roof deck.
I have a Steve question that I want to ask, so that he has time to look up the answer, if that's okay, which is, on the Bergamot districts and the, and the Bergamot districts, I just want to make sure that my memory is correct, because it wasn't in the staff report. Either I tried to get this through planning commission, or we did it and failed, or we put it through and council ignored it, was that tiering in below two acres. I think we suggested a tiered approach when we sent it to council the first time. And I think you're coming back with pretty much the tiered approach that we suggested, but I just wanted to verify that, and I, it might mean looking something up, so I wanted to ask you, Steve, before we get there. Thanks.
So before we go to Steve, I only have one policy question, and it's regarding that council direction of allowing or guaranteeing two units of at least 1,200 square foot each. So when establishing a duplex in the R1, council gave that direction. And that is combined with the increase in potential ADU numbers. So the question is, if standards are required to be modified, to provide these new guaranteed sizes or guaranteed unit amounts, and again, it's just the two units, the 1,200 square feet for the duplexes, not, there's no guarantee for ADUs at the moment. Which standards should be modified first? If someone comes to us and says, I, your standards are precluding me from getting two units of at least these sizes, therefore, we need to provide relief from one of our standards or multiple of our standards, we wanted to ask the council, the commission, which standards should be, you know, prioritized first? So in front of you is staff's recommendation of prioritize. Largely, this order was to first and foremost, address what can be viewed from the public right away. So making sure, so that is why, like, for example, the, the front yard setback is the last one that we are recommending for potential modification, is that is the one that, you know, really has the most impacts from a pedestrian point of view. So the order that we are recommending would be, if someone needs more FAR, that would be the first one we give. Maybe reduce the building separation smaller than four feet would be the next one. Get rid of the stepbacks for upper stories, maybe reduce parking even more. Give smaller side and rear setbacks of less than four feet, which could have some impacts with fire and safety, but we could at least allow it. And kind of lastly, again, under the lens of what is experienced from the public right away, maybe as a last resort, we would allow for an increased building height. Currently, in the R1, we allow up to 28 feet, which gives a comfortable two stories. And the final one is a reduction in the front yard setback. So our question is, for the commission, to help staff understand what standard should be modified first to guarantee the sizes and the numbers we have to allow per council direction.
I have a, I have a question for you, Ross. We're talking about a duplex.
Correct.
That would mean that you rip down the existing building and put up two?
Potentially, or maybe you are converting and expanding. So it wouldn't be a triplex, this would always be for the establishment of a duplex. So just two units, whether they are attached or not. In Santa Monica, two units, whether they're attached or not, is considered a duplex for Santa Monica's local definition. So this is when a parcel under our provisions of lot splits and duplexes in the R1 neighborhood, council's direction is, they want to guarantee that these units that could created are of a certain size. And sometimes that may, I, I don't know how often, but if and when, we might have to modify standards to get an applicant to these guaranteed minimums, if you will. Maybe there needs to be some relief in standards.
So just for clarification, if I live on a 2,500 square foot parcel, does this mean that the city has to give me 2,400 square feet, just if I call up and ask?
Yes.
Like multi, so in the multiverse or Minecraft, like, where do we, where, where do?
We, I mean, we recognize that you're right. I mean, sometimes two 1,200 square foot units could be the whole parcel, potentially. But that's where we could ask, well, instead of maybe allowing them to build in the front yard to get that, maybe we give an extra floor, a story, to get to those heights, but control the footprint still. I will say that I think that size in the R1 is maybe non-existent, I, don't quote me on that.
Or OP1, but you.
OP, yes.
Very small lots.
Given, yeah, I mean, I would say the majority of the lots that we've seen utilize both the state and Santa Monica's local implementation for lots, lots splits and duplexes. They're typically in the R1. OP1's lot sizes are very small. We rarely even see ADUs in the OP1. So we more envision this for the parcels that can kind of handle that type of development, but it could.
But let's say, let's say you have a parcel, let's say you have a smaller lot, I don't know if this exists, but I'm going to make up a case. Let's say you have a smaller lot with a back alley. And ultimately, it probably makes more sense to create a JDU, but, but some, essentially, you want to go, you want to, you want to put in a second unit, or two of them. Could you stack them on the back alley? Could you, would you consider giving, when you ask the question about height, would you consider giving them height on the back as opposed to height on the front?
You could, the commission could certainly per se that when increase in height needs to be provided, that new third floor hypothetically, needs to be X feet from the front property line. You could, I mean, ultimately, though, that might still not be enough. But yeah, you have a little bit of control of when we want to give relief and maybe how much, potentially.
Okay, thanks.
I'm going to hand it over to Steve for a couple of slides, and then I'll see you in a minute.
Good evening, commission. Okay. So staff received a direction from council on revising the special program for large parcels that are located as part of the BAP adopted changes that we had back in October of last year, with the intent to provide greater flexibility for those housing projects on parcels that are less than two acres in size. And also those projects electing to participate in the special program that we have out there, which is, you know, has its one-acre plus threshold, and with that would allow for AA review process. So just a really quick recap of the program itself, which includes that the projects comply with certain requirements and certain standards that cannot be waived. These standards include the residential unit mix, which is already established within the zoning ordinance. We have a greater ground floor open space, meaning a bump from the 12% to up to 14% for these types of projects, and also providing either the pedestrian path or the street in accordance with the BAP street network mapping. Now specifically, council's direction was to make changes to ensure that housing projects are feasible for these sites that are under two acres in size. And in doing so, for the pathway or the street requirement, to provide flexibility when determining whether either a pathway or a street would be most appropriate, and its exact location to be flexible, where the, perhaps the BAP's street network map is used more of a guidance rather than showing exactly where things are supposed to be shown. In addition to that, to have the open space of that pathway or the street count at a hundred and fifty percent towards the fourteen percent ground floor open space requirement, in which currently that open space does not count at all towards the fourteen percent. So we are recommending changes that would allow flexibility in both the type and the location of that pathway or the street, and this would be subject to director approval. However, in the terms, in terms of the open space and the suggested one hundred and fifty percent methodology, we are instead recommending an alternate approach of simply not applying the additional two percent bump that we have to make it fourteen, and really just keeping the open space at the twelve percent, which is required for all housing projects. We did run a few test, case studies, applying the one hundred and fifty percent credit methodology, which could result in open space that could be a little bit lower than the twelve percent baseline. So we figured instead, we should probably be keeping that percentage at twelve percent as the base minimum. This change still achieves the intent, which is to be flexible and also reduce any open space for these smaller parcels that are within the program. Included in these changes are findings that the director would need to make, which include that the alternate plan continues to improve the network connections and the circulation of the BAP, that the pathways are pedestrian scaled and designed, and if a new street is selected, that it aligns with any future funding. If we're, the city was able to obtain to actually build a new street, we just want to make sure that there aren't going to be any inconsistency snags later on, if that's the case. We do believe that these changes provide greater overall building and site design flexibility for these smaller sized parcels that would be within the program, and that would be consistent with council's direction. But the question about the commission's recommendation, before it went to council, council, I'm sorry, the commission recommended from one acre to, I believe it was two point two five threshold of keeping that at the twelve before we jumped up to fourteen to everybody else. So this essentially is kind of coming back very similarly to what the commission had recommended. But anyway, so that, that's kind of, and I think the commission at that point felt like we wanted to make sure that these smaller parcels that were kind of above the one acre and above, we're not going to get too hamstrung with providing a lot of open space that the other larger parcels can really afford because of their size.
Can I ask right about on that, because good, thank you for reminding us that it was to two point two five, because I think we were looking at the actual division of the site likelihood, and we put the split at two point two five for a reason. Is there a reason that council wanted it at two? Could we come back to them and suggest that we go up to two point two five with this idea?
Yeah, I mean, the two point two five was their recommendation or their direction, but.
It's ultimately a policy decision, so certainly, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think we picked that, if I remember correctly, we actually, you did a survey of the parcels and we were, we, we actually, it was, the break was at two point two five. It wasn't at two. And we were trying to get those one to two point two five acre parcels to opt into this program. And we didn't want them to not, because we wanted the unit mix and we wanted the other benefits.
Certainly, that could be part of the commission's recommendation to the council, for example.
Okay. And then on this, just so I understand with the intent of the BAP, and I wasn't, I'm trying to remember, did we, I don't remember when we finalized the BAP, if I was on the commission then, because I'm post loose. Where does safety figure in? Because there was one discussion at council that didn't go through where we were really pushing for a more open understanding of what is a pedestrian pathway with bailouts and kind of what, you know, allowing, we were allowing overhang in order to get a wider pedestrian pathway. How is staff currently interpreting that? Because I'm still, particularly if we're going to give projects the opportunity to redesign the BAP's street network, I would have some concerns that we maintain safety and the ability to bail out as a key priority.
Yeah, I think we can accomplish that through kind of the overall design of that pathway, let's say, for example. So we have our minimum pathway with the twenty feet as we're starting to work with any applicant or development team about how that's going to be designed. I think those are very common things of lighting and safety that the ARB staff can really kind of start to help. Kind of making sure we don't have any blind corners. I think that was a concern with the commission.
Okay, I just really don't want to land on the expo bike path between Cloverfield and Twentieth all over again. Yeah, okay. Thanks. Any questions? Okay, I'll pass the next section back to Ross.
Okay, we're wrapping up. These are some additional edits. So similar to the first item you heard that we bifurcated from this, there was a second parcel that we have identified with a mapping issue that really has stemmed either or from both, the 2010 LOOSE update or the two thousand, and the 2015 zoning ordinance update. Similarly, this issue has resulted in non-conforming conditions and impediments to future development of the parcel, including the ability to lease and obtain financing. So the parcel in question is thirteen thirty-one Wilshire Boulevard that is currently zoned as MUB with the LOUSE update, oh, sorry, MUB and R two, so it is split zoned. Similarly, it is split zoned in the LOUSE as mixed use boulevard and low density housing. So what is happening is that split zoning is actually running through, not the middle, but essentially the middle of the building. So part of it, part of the existing building is MUB and part of the building is R two. We are recommending that just to expand that MUB into the remainder of the parcel, so that whole building is of one zone, which would be MUB. So it would be removing the split zone and changing that R two portion to MUB. And similarly, for the LOUSE, to update the LOUSE designation as well, to be consistent. The next additional revision is conversion, parcel coverage to FAR conversion. So in our residential zoning districts, so that would be R one, two, three, four, and our OPs, we still have parcel coverage that controls the development size and footprint of a building. However, state law has started to dictate minimum floor areas for certain developments such as ADUs, duplexes in our R one districts, and even multi-unit developments of ten or fewer in our multi-unit districts. And they're doing these through a minimum floor area. Our problem is parcel coverage captures a lot more than what is considered floor area. For example, when there is a second floor, second story, sorry, upper story cantilever, the area below that cantilever that could be completely open counts towards parcel coverage, but everywhere else in the city, it doesn't count towards floor area. So we felt it was time to finally take the leap of converting our parcel coverage to FAR to align with better line of state law, to align with all of our other zoning districts, to have one implementation for development potential on a parcel. So the summary of changes was we converted the parcel coverage percentages to FAR. There is no change in size. We did not increase the amount of parcel coverage during that conversion, because you will see parcel coverage was typically dictated by you got a certain percentage per story. So for example, in the R two, when you had a fifty percent parcel coverage, that was fifty percent every floor, and there was two floors. So we converted that to a one point O FAR. So largely, as you can see the comparison of the table, when you take the parcel coverage percentage multiplied by the number of stories, that is what produced the FAR decimal, if you will. And largely, there has been no increase as far as that conversion is, in regards to that conversion.
Except for R one?
Not even R one. So R one, sorry, yes, R one is the only zone that parcel coverage was divided between the floor. So a forty-five percent parcel coverage means some of that had to be the ground floor, and some of that was the second floor. They didn't get a forty-five percent per floor. Again, another confusing part of what parcel coverage was trying to do. So a point four five FAR is a forty-five percent parcel coverage for the R one district. Or for example, when you're, if, let's say if you had a parcel coverage in the R one that gave you fifty percent, it would have to be twenty-five on the ground, twenty-five on the second floor, still fifty percent. That is why for the FAR conversion for the R one, you're not seeing the same, it's not an increase, but the same conversion that you're seeing in all the other zones that had a parcel coverage per floor, not a per building. Yeah.
So let's have another Ross and Tony flashback. Parcel coverage in the R one, right? We had this whole thing about boxes and about you could have a second story that was bigger than the first story. None of this is changing?
Typically, no. There, there are some revisions, so additional, so when that happened, we always heard that sometimes parcel coverage was not the biggest impact on the appearance of a building. It was the modulation standards, the step back standards. So when we were converting the parcel coverage to FAR, we had to go through the very lengthy, confusing list of what's included and what's excluded in a parcel coverage and ask line by line, you know, by giving that up or including that, is it still keeping the fundamental aspects of parcel coverage alive? So while we did provide a lot of simplification, a lot of more streamlined what counts and what doesn't, we ensured that there were still aspects that still counted towards FAR that would have always been counted towards parcel coverage. So for example, any of those aspects that would kind of have an impact on the massing of a second floor. I'll use step backs, for example. Parcel coverage right now requires a step back, which is essentially a modulation of a building, kind of an inset to, let's say, the side that might have three walls and one open wall facing to the neighboring parcel. Parcel coverage right now allows for that, doesn't count towards parcel coverage unless you put a solid roof on it, because then you stop feeling the modulation. It's not as impactful anymore. So that is one of the parcel coverage standards that currently exist that we held on to, that we said, however, in our residential zones, if you put a solid, or more than fifty percent solid roof over these type of step backs, that will count against your FAR.
Okay.
So there were a couple. There is far less, if you kind of see the comparison. But we really took a large effort to try to ask ourselves what needs to be retained to keep the essence of parcel coverage, and what it was always trying to do, but not very successfully, still alive in this conversion.
And then following up on this, and this goes back to your earlier question about ADU compliance. You mentioned additional height. You mentioned three stories. I'm not trying to open up a conversation about a standard of three stories in R, in R one. Don't worry. But would it be helpful in this table to be able to say, if through a modification to comply with state law, you find yourself having to offer an applicant three stor, a third story, this is the FAR for that project?
Yeah, I think you could definitely do that. We kind of do something similarly in our multi-unit zones where state law requires that you give a certain FAR for, I think, seven or fewer units. But we have a provision that says, however, if state law gets you to eight to ten, we have to guarantee you a one point two five FAR. So there could be a similar concept of when there are times that we might have to allow a taller building, that obviously is going to come with some amount of additional FAR to accommodate that now third floor. So yeah, I think we.
But not so much that we, so that we could achieve what I was talking about earlier, which is
Yes.
Limiting the, like, the setback or really limiting that third story massing.
You could say an increase of height that does not exceed X square feet, something like that.
Okay, so I would, yeah, maybe for later, we could figure out what that number would be.
But ultimately, the hope is between how we implement parcel coverage today and this conversion, you should not experience a difference. The numbers haven't really changed, and the essence and the, you know, the theme of what parcel coverage is trying to do, we really tried to make sure we took a hard look and kept a couple of the ones that we felt like were really important to keep. Yes.
When I was looking at the, the conversion, I, what kind of caught my eye was a one point O and the two, the R two zone, and that just seemed kind of small to me. But if I do the math, it, it, it's not changing it dramatically, but I want to ask this question. Wasn't there a time when you were able to, and I can't remember why we made this change, you were able to measure out to the center line of the alley in R two zones, but then they were so afraid that we would get overdevelopment, that the council stepped in and said, you're not allowed that to do in R two zones, but you can still do it in other zones in the city?
That is true, and I think the only way that is still, you're still able to do that is if you're a hundred percent affordable housing project. We still give you half the alley in the calculation of density. But you're right, everywhere else or in every other fashion of development, that half alley is gone.
So in every other zone except for the?
Only with certain developments.
Only the, only, it's gone everywhere unless you're doing a hundred percent affordable.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's a loss.
We do measure rear yard setbacks, except for in the R one, from center line of alley still. So that's one thing that the center line of the alley has kind of kept intact. But everything else is pretty much parcel based calculations, like the actual parcel.
Okay. I mean, in theory, that was the parcel. That was an easement that was given up for the alley. And it's not really a fair taking of land, but I guess that's not in front of us today, is it?
Yeah. I, I'm not sure where the, that change happened and why, but yes, you're correct.
I remember it was, it was a fear of overdevelopment, and that it allowed too much development. It was okay for that council person who lived in the R one zone, but not for the rest of us in the.
Any questions on this?
Allies were part of the eighteen seventy-five map. They weren't taken from the parcels.
My title report might say something else, but that's not in front of us tonight, is it? That's fine.
So the next additional revision is aligning our LOUSE and zoning ordinance for consistency. So specifically, this is within our R two and three, R two, three, and four zoning districts. So pursuant to such laws, such as AB eight twenty-one, there are provisions that say when there is an inconsistency between the general plan and the zoning ordinance, we have to be allowing the greater intensity, the greater density between the two. Currently, in our multi-unit residential districts, there is an inconsistency between what was envisioned in the LOUSE in twenty-ten and what was actually implemented in twenty-fifteen through the zoning ordinance update. The table below kind of shows you a comparison that in the R two, for example, we limit you per one unit per two thousand square feet of parcel area, but a max of four. So if that calculation got you to six, you ended at four. But the LOUSE never had a cap like that, and actually envisioned top, bigger tiers that allowed you a different calculation than one per two thousand. In the R two, it allowed one per fifteen hundred. So staff looked at this as these are inconsistencies. How can we provide better transparency to this, so develop people that are looking to add to their parcel, redevelop their parcel, know essentially what their density can be? So however, we did this, reassessed the potential impact of increasing these maximum allowable densities to understand whether it may result in displacement in residential units. And largely, what we found is it resulted in very little potential displacement risk. So specifically, in the R two, of the, I believe, two percent of the, sorry, one hundred and ninety-seven parcels within the R two could add at least one new net unit. But only sixty-five of the hundred and ninety-five, which sixty-five is only two percent of the entirety of R two, have the most potential to actually redevelop, because they are developed as single unit dwellings, which have no protection, you know, they typically aren't the ones under rent control. They won't have the issue of the no net loss required by SB three thirty or eight. So they have the biggest, they have the easiest way to redevelop to a multi-unit development. In R three and four, our analysis showed that there really was no additional parcels that were likely to redevelop with this increase in density potential because of either the amount of units that were already on site, their protected status, whether they were rent controlled or maybe deed restricted, that would make it very difficult to redevelop anyways. So staff felt comfortable recommending to align our base densities in our R two and three, four districts, which was always envisioned in the LOUSE, which, as you can see here in the R two, would be one unit per fifteen hundred square feet with no cap. In the R three, it's one unit per twenty-two, one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet with no cap, and one unit per nine. And one unit per nine-hundred square feet in the R4 with a net, again, no cap. And that is either taking the tier-two that existed in the loose for the R3 and 4, or removing the, revising the calculation for the R2 that never has a tier-two. But in 2015, we elected to not fully implement the intensities under the loose. So, because of some state law, we felt it is time to realign the vision of our, 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 our multi-unit neighborhoods. Uh, and the last section is just a table of necessary cleanups and clarity. As you know, we do our best to be perfect every time, but inevitably we notice errors, um, you know, sentences that meant something that we didn't mean for them to mean. So, this is a table that goes through to provide some clarity. So, there was a revision to when subdivisions of ten or few, ten or fewer units, and our multifamily clarifies the applicability and requirements between ownership and rental projects. Uh, we revised the Architecture Review Board that is already limited to three hearings to define what is a hearing. We wanted to make sure it was when a, uh, item was actually discussed before the board, wasn't one that maybe got continued due to quorum issues. We want to have real discussion for it to count. Um, adaptive reuse, we did clarify, we clarified that adaptive reuse does not apply to R1 and OP1 districts. That was always the intent. It just included just residential districts. We forgot to say except R1 and OP1. Also, it clarifies when you are allowed to do a side and rear addition. Uh, what we really meant by the side and rear, sometimes the front of the parcel is not really what the development's front is. So, we just provided some clarifying that was always kind of delivered. We just found that the text didn't read as clearly as we wanted it to be. Uh, for density bonus, we made sure that whenever there is a fractional unit, uh, it always rounds up to the next whole number. Uh, there was confusion of if that applied to when you did base density calculations versus the project's density calculations, and state law makes it clear it is to both. So, it was prevent, just clarification. Um, for our air quality assessment zone, uh, we provided two revisions. One was when you are not allowed to have outdoor spaces on elevations that maybe face the freeway because of air quality assessment reasons, to provide flexibility of maybe how else you could provide those balconies. We have a requirement that says you can't have one, so our proposals allow them to take that private square footage and provide us more common space. We do that for our hundred percent affordable housing projects already. So, we felt like, given that this is something that we are imposing on these projects, we wanted to provide a little design flexibility of how open space can be provided. The last one was to provide clarification on what form they needed to fill out to show compliance with our assessment zone. For the HPP, we wanted to make clear that if state law requires a different affordability allocation, that that can always override our local, like, let's say, our five-five-five split. Uh, if for some reason the replacement units had to be all low, we wanted to acknowledge that you can kind of override our local because state law requires that one. Uh, delegation of authority, we wanted to make clear, uh, what the director versus the zoning administrator versus the designee can approve. Typically, this is around kind of these new ministerial approvals that state law has been requiring more and more. Uh, single-room occupancy, these were just, we had the wrong code section. That is all the change was. And lastly, uh, this is maybe assuming that you are okay with the reduction of separation of unit, of buildings from the current six to four. Uh, if we're allowing that for ADU separation, we wanted to be consistent across the code to allow for separation to meet four feet, no matter if it's an ADU or a different accessory structure. So, maybe that would be dependent on your, you know, direction regarding the ADU. And that is it. So, staff recommends, you know, we have a handful of policy questions, but staff recommends, you know, approving the resolutions attached to the PowerPoint, and we are, uh, here to answer any of your questions.
I have a question. I'm going to put the city attorney on the spot because I real, we did not really talk about owner occupancy for reasons. So, could you, uh, we've received a lot of letters around that, so I think it would be helpful for the public to understand, um, why staff has been silent on that matter, to the extent that you can explain what the issue, what the issue before us really is and what our range of possible responses might be.
Sure. So, as, um, as Mr. Furman explained, there was a sixteen item earlier this year, from January of this year, instructing, directing the, uh, city manager and the city attorney to, um, commence the process for amending the zoning ordinance, to update in accordance with SB four-fifty and some, and make additional changes, one of which is to remove the owner occupancy requirement for, uh, the lot-split and duplex, uh, projects located in, uh, R1 zones. Uh, that is a policy, um, conversation that the council is having, and that is a policy conversation that is before you this evening. Legal questions have been raised in some, um, uh, written correspondence that you have received. The, uh, issue, uh, is actually subject to pending litigation, so our office is unable to comment on any sort of legalities related to that at this time. Uh, but again, there is a full policy discussion before you that you, that you may wish to engage in.
And are you able to share, um, your understanding of the legislative purpose of the sixteen item, to the extent that we might be able to understand council's underlighting motive in, um, opening that conversation?
I mean, I would say that it, it kind of speaks for itself.
Okay.
Um, the sixteen item. I'm happy to pull up that language, um, for you, uh, at the moment, but I, I think it was just, it was fairly straightforward and, and fairly direct just to, just to, um, in order to further the city's affirmatively furthering fair housing and getting the, uh, diverse, I believe that was the policy that council, uh, proposed was, um, to, as part of the diverse housing choices in the R1.
Got it. Okay.
Uh, hi, in the city's highest opportunity areas, and then it also directs staff to come back, um, with pertinent information after, after, a year after implementation, on how it actually is helping with the affirmatively furthering hair, fair housing goals and creating more affordable missing-middle homes.
Okay, and you're aware, are you, I, I believe you are aware, but I'm going to ask this as a question, that there is pending state legislation related to variety of owner occupancy rules in the current legislative session?
Yes, and we are, we are monitoring that as well and would be providing the commission and the council with any updates, um, along the way.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Just, did you say that SB four-fifty addresses this or requires this or not? I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say that.
No, the sixteen item, um, uh-
Just a sixteen item? It's not an-
Yes, the sixteen item included language about SB four-fifty as well.
Okay.
Clarify one thing, the, the, um, apparently, HCD has given, this is not about, the, the duplexes and the lot splits is what council's guidance was about. There is definitely some discussion at the HCD level about ADUs and owner occupancy, which is pending resolution through state legislation that's currently going under, is currently under review because HCD has issued regulations that kind of expand that, like, have created, have liberalized that, uh, regime.
So, anybody else have any questions?
So, what?
Public input.
Public input.
I need some clarity in terms of what we were asked to vote on.
But we need to hear from the public first, then we can get down there. Let's hear the, let's hear from the public first.
Okay, well, let's, I've only got one.
Yeah, we have a whole bunch.
They go back to the same pile. There's a whole bunch somewhere.
How many do we have?
Yeah, we, we've got a bunch of-
We have more than ten. What, what does that mean for a time limit?
So, yeah, we were about to interject. So, per the Planning Commission's Rules of Order, when you have more than seven requests to speak, public comment is limited to two minutes, um, per speaker?
Let me, let me go back, because, um, Dave Rand is-
Evening, Commissioner. Dave Rand, Land Use Attorney, here tonight to talk again about the Bergamont Area Plan AA incentive. Since we've last, uh, uh, your last hearing on this, we've had a chance to test-run this provision on a couple of projects. Our firm is working now on four projects that are over one acre, that are in the Bergamont housing projects, that all could potentially utilize this. And what we are seeing is what we discussed last time, which is that it's not working well for the smaller-large sites. And Commissioner Landis, your, your recollection was correct. That two-point-two-five acre distinction is important because two of our smaller-large sites are just a hair over two acres in size. And so, you did said that, uh, very deliberately to ensure those projects would have been captured into this AA incentive. One of the things I, I, I think respectfully that's missing from the, uh, text of the proposed amendment to the incentive is a, the language from the sixteen item, the council direction, that says the, with respect to the pathways, that the exact pathway location should be flexible as to avoid bisecting parcels and limiting site flexibility. The problem we're seeing right now with the streets and the pathways is that they're cutting into the site, and no developer is going to build two expensive buildings to take this AA incentive. So, I would implore you to do two things. One, for the smaller-large sites, between one acre and two-point-two-five acres, number one, eliminate the streets. No one's going to give you a street for this provision. That's just a non-starter. Um, we've seen that on one of the project. It was, it was the end of the AA incentive for that project. Two, with respect to the pathways, that could be workable, but allow flexibility to have the pathway go around the building. Ensure that it doesn't bisect the site, because again, no one's going to do that. Those two things would make a big deal, and those may seem like concessions, but you're still getting public open space, and you're still getting the mandatory two and three bedrooms, so it's still a public benefit. Thank you very much.
Question for Mr. Rand. I have seen versions of what you're talking about. I can think of, I can think of a particular project in Bratislava that, um, did not use streets but created pathways that, that encircled buildings and were curved and quite pleasant. It actually made for a much more, um, creative approach. Have you shared, um, examples from around the world or around the country of what you're talking about so that this can be envisioned by staff and council?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not nearly as well-traveled as you are. So, my, uh, my experiences and suggestions are a little bit more pedestrian, like, from LA.
That'd be fine.
I don't, I don't have Bratislava for you.
This is Santa Monica. We like to talk about, you know, superblocks in Barcelona.
The answer is, we don't, we don't need to go to Bratislava or, or Budapest or anywhere else. We, we can go to the Bergamont area. We, we've got three sites that we've been working to try to work out this pathway-street thing right here in the Bergamont area, right where this planned incentive program is supposed to apply. They're great, great test cases, housing developers wanting to use the program, but it's just not, it's just not fitting. And this, by the way, this was a great idea that your staff had, great idea, and tons of excitement, tons of enthusiasm. And during this discussion and at council, there was a lot of talk about, well, once you test-run a few of these and you bring it to staff and see what works, what doesn't, chances are there could be a subsequent discussion. Here we are, and I'm telling you from experience-
Right.
Streets don't work, period. Pathways could work if you let them move around the building. But if you insist on maintaining adherence to the two-thousand, what was it, ten Bergamont Area Plan street standards, which are now frankly largely irrelevant, where you're getting streets and pathways to nowhere, like tying staff's hands to have that, it doesn't make any sense.
Sure, but my point is, I think it's, when you're asking for something like that, which I tend to support, it is helpful to have, to evidence from existing built communities where this has, has contributed to the neighborhood feel and has not detracted from achieving circulation goals. And, you know, the example that I offered, uh, may be one, but there may be others. And I guess what I would just say is encourage your clients to, you know, share models. No, I mean, Google it. Like, I'm, I'm saying to share models so that people understand what's being asked, because I think when you, when you hear, "Take away the streets," it, that sounds, I understand what you're saying, but that sounds bad.
Well, I, I, I mean-
Michelle Fresco's word.
There, there's no street obligation that exists, though, unless we're talking about this incentive. So, it's not, it's, and, and the problem with the streets that we've seen is they're, they're not connecting to the logical circulation, you know, system that is act, the facts-on-the-ground system in the Bergamont area. So, um, it's-
All I'm saying is help us help you.
Yeah. No, 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 no. Well, uh, help you, the idea is we'll give you public open space, and we have plenty of examples all, all over where that works and works well.
Rand, Mr. Rand, we've got utilities in the streets and stuff that has to be taken care of. So, that's, it's a more complicated issue than, say, give the streets over.
No, no, I'm not talking about taking away existing streets. These would be creation of new streets. Yeah, yeah, different, yeah.
So, what you're, what you're saying is, uh, keep, keep the pathway concept intact, have it go around the building. I would imagine that the pathways would track relatively close to the parcel lines of the property. Have we looked at where I, where these parcel lines kind of line up? And do they actually lead us to, uh, the street, the connection to Olympic that we want to maintain, and the other connections within the Bergamont? Are they laid out in a logical way for, you know, that foot traffic to be meaningful?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I think that would, um, you would, you would need to ensure that if there is going to be a pathway, it would have to serve at actual circulation benefit. So, not just satisfying a requirement to satisfy it, but totally agree with that, that point. And I, I, I mean, I guess what I would suggest is if there is an opportunity for a pathway at the discretion of staff, because there is a circulation enhancement connection benefit, then that project should be allowed to, uh, to, required to provide it so long as it can be done flexibly without cutting the building into and creating a feasibility issue.
Right, right, or creating tunnels that go through.
Or tunnels, right, which, which are not great to walk through anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Thank you.
I have one more question for you before we go on, on the street bit, business. Of what I'm realizing, thinking about the example that I was, that I mentioned, you need to have driveways. In other words, those buildings that you want to build with pathways around them have to be serviced at some level.
Sure.
Right? They, people who have, residents who have cars are going to want to park them somewhere, and you've got to be able to make deliveries. So, when you say, like, how do we square this circle? We're not going to build, let's say, we remove the requirement that you build streets. How are you going to accomplish that question, the Commissioner Hamilton? Like, how are you going to, what are the, are those driveways going to be like driveways on steroids that connect to Nebraska, Stanford? Like, what, how's that going to play out?
No, are, are you concerned about the conflict between the driveways and the pedestrian pathway?
To a certain extent, and I'm also, and I'm also curious because part of the purpose of the grid is to provide access to the buildings on the street served by the grid. So, if you're not building streets and you're not building tunnels, how are you, how are you in fact creating those connections?
You know, like, all good points. All I'm telling you from a practical perspective is if you put the creation of a street on the back of a developer who can go through a different process, then-
Agreed.
Then you're going to lose the open space in the three bedrooms. And so, your question is a larger planning question that smarter minds than me will do. I don't have an answer to that. All I can tell you is, you know, it works better because we've seen it on the larger sites. You can have driveways that don't interfere with the pedestrian pathway. You can have a pathway that cuts through the site because you can arrange buildings on a, you know-
Wherever you want, okay.
A superblock on Stanford, Berkeley, uh, Olympic and Nebraska, and we can do all kinds of things on that because it's four-plus acres. So, all can be accomplished.
And are we giving you-
There's no street in the network, but if there was, that could be accomplished. That could be-
And are we giving you the flexibility, and we're giving you the flexibility to build an under, we're giving you the flexibility to build a large underground podium so that conceivably you could build one parking structure to serve the entire multiple towers?
That's right.
Correct?
Because it's, it's one, can be one development project with this particular incentive. Exactly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Jonah Breslau.
Honorable Chair Tolkien and commissioners, my name is Jonah Breslau, and I'm here on behalf of Unite Your Local Eleven and our thirty-two thousand members in Southern California and Arizona. And we ask that the commission recommend to the council that projects that include hotels are not processed administratively under section nine-point-three-nine. Uh, this change is very important to ensure that, uh, that this ordinance is used to accomplish its purposes of creating more housing while not undermining the city's oversight over new- new hotel development. Even if there are improvements to make to the housing project approval process, it's the existing development procedures that work well for hotel projects. Santa Monica has produced many outstanding hotels with the current procedures and these involved robust public debate and discussion and ultimately came out better than they started. Too often, attempts to streamline housing are hijacked in the service of high-end commercial development. For instance, even in Santa Monica, we saw at the 1420 through 1422 20th Street project, roughly 19 months after the preliminary application was initially submitted, the developers submitted revised plans, which increased square footage by 20% and added two more stories and included a 40-room hotel. And so, you know, during the planning commission hearing, the city staff argued that the city had limited authority and discretion. But, you know, because even though the city's zoning rules explicitly did not allow hotel use, and we believe the city law should not go beyond state law to streamline such projects, which could occur if there are no changes made. Moreover, disallowing hotel projects from accessing these streamlined approval processes would follow the precedent of many recently passed laws, as you saw, actually. So we urge you to, to recommend to the council that they revise the proposed law to ensure that streamlined approval does not occur for hotel projects. Thank you.
Is it Eli Quizanats?
Hi, my name is Eli Quiñones. I'm proud to be United Here. I live in San Fernando Valley and take me two hours to get to my work. I worked at Furman Midamar for 35 years. And I would like to, we're increases of housing here in Santa Monica, not hotels increases. So please do not allow hotels administrate approval process.
Read three names at a time.
Read the next three names.
Three minutes.
No, no, two minutes.
It's two minutes.
Right. Chair, could you?
Chair, could you tell us who's next in line after Ms. Espinoza?
Next in line is Daniel Aguilar.
And after that?
Richard Melanese.
Okay, so could we have Mr. Aguilar and Mr. Melanese line up behind Ms. Espinoza?
And we do want to note that you're getting four, four minutes because there's translation.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Hola, mi nombre es Maria Espinoza y soy un miembro de Local 11 Unite Here. Nuestras leyes de vivienda deberían utilizarse para fomentar la vivienda. Sin embargo, a veces los intentos de optimizar la vivienda se desvían para favorecer el desarrollo comercial de hoteles de alta gama. Para el proyecto de la calle 20, del número 1420 y 1422, el promotor presentó inicialmente un proyecto de seis plantas y 50 viviendas. 19 meses después, lo modificaron para añadir dos plantas y un hotel, dedicando todo ese espacio adicional a un uso hotelero que ni siquiera está permitido por la zonificación de esta zona. La ley, la ley municipal no debería de ir más allá de la ley estatal para agilizar este tipo de proyectos. Por favor, asegúrense que las leyes de vivienda se utilicen para fomentar la vivienda, no para la hotelería.
So hello, my name is Maria Espinoza and I'm a member of Unite Your Local 11. Our housing laws should be used to encourage housing, but sometimes attempts to streamline housing are used in the service of high-end commercial development of hotels. For instance, at the project on 20th Street from 1420 to 1422, the developer first submitted a project with six stories and 50 housing units. 19 months later, they changed it to add two stories and a hotel, dedicating all that extra space to a hotel use that is not even allowed by the zoning in this area. City law should not go beyond state law to streamline such projects. So please make sure housing laws are used to encourage housing, not hotels.
Gail Denny?
No, Mr.?
Oh, good.
Aguilar is not here and men.
I think you're going too far here.
I think I'm next.
Yeah, you are.
Richard Melanese?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, police, planning commissioners. Pleasure to see you all. I just want to compliment Ross for a presentation. It was quite something. Thanks. My name's Richard Melanese. I live at 1108 Stanford Street. I'm a member of Stanford Neighbors Against City Overreach, SNACO, for the attorney. We're suing the city for various, you know, infringes. Anyway, thanks for serving the city. I really appreciate that. I know what that's like. SB 9 was enacted to help support residents by preserving their communities, not to aid and abet aggressive developers. I hope you keep that in mind. Let's cut to the mustard. Why would you, the planning commission, want to eliminate the three-year owner residency requirement? Why would you want to eliminate that? I don't quite get it. It is law. It's in law now. Anyway, I can't believe we're having this discussion. Who do you think you represent here? It must be the developers. And why are you doing this? I don't get it. I know the city council kicked this back to you because they don't want to take the responsibility when the heat comes from this community. Anyway, to one end, the developer. Whom does it help? The developer? By eliminating the residency? It helps the developer. Who do you think it helps? The law wasn't set up for developers. It was set up for residents. Sorry, I'm a little passionate about this because I live diagonally across from this project at 1101 Stanford Street. Why does this community also get three days to consider these proposals now? Why do we get three days? Is that your standard? That you want the community to get only three days notice to come and make comments about these things? So look into that, please. It's important. The city is about us, not about committees. It's about the residents. We represent over 75 Stanford-area residents. We are not going away. We are not going away. We have a court date in July. Win or lose, we're not going away.
Sir, that beep was for your time.
Thank you very much and I really appreciate your time.
We only got five days, by the way.
Point of clarification. This is a process that is ongoing. Tonight is the last night. Even if we choose tonight to accept the recommendations, this goes on to city council for final approval. So this is not the end of the line for this discussion at all?
But your decision, yes or no, goes to the city council. Is that the way it works?
That's correct.
Right.
We recommend.
So we'll be watching. And I appreciate it. We'll be watching.
We'll, we'll be here.
Good evening. My name is Gail Denny. I'm also a member of the neighborhood group SNACO. And we were forced to take legal action, which we didn't really want to do, to the city due to its failure to comply with the law. Now we're once again fighting to protect the community that we live in. We strongly oppose the removal of the owner occupancy provision. Eliminating this requirement would open the door for speculation to developers to buy single homes, displacing long-term residents and replacing family neighborhoods with profit-driven market rate developments, just like what happened with Stanford Del Mar who we're suing. SB 9 was intended to support small-scale developments and help families build intergenerational wealth, which is a wonderful thing. But Santa Monica ordinance goes beyond state requirements, creating loopholes that favor large developers. This is not fair. Such as the out-of-state firm we're suing, Stanford Del Mar. Rather than local residents, it was meant to support. Tonight, we urge you to oppose item 11A, that you can do that, or at least modify to retain the owner occupancy requirements to safeguard our community's future. Protect our neighborhoods, do the right thing, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm.
Go for it.
I think one of them's already called.
Okay, Stephen Anderson.
Stephen Anderson. Christina Navarro.
Good evening, planning commission. Thank you for all your service. 20-year resident, Stephen Anderson. I am the, the person that everyone's all mad about here, Stanford Del Mar. You know, if you're a homeowner and you're going to hire a contractor, you need an LLC to protect yourself so you don't get sued. They're trying to use the owner occupancy requirement to say you can't build on a vacant lot, right? Because, so these are just ways to try to stop a project. I didn't actually want to talk about the lawsuit tonight. I just think we've lost thousands of homes in the Palisades. Duplexes are badly needed housing. You know, we need more three bedrooms. All of the units that we're building on Wilshire and Lincoln are small units, right? Studios ones and twos. There's just no larger units for families. And so this is a small-scale development. To say that, you know, I'm just an individual, I've never done, I've never even been to a planning commission before in Santa Monica. And our one is covered with Thomas James and corporations that are building fancy spec homes, right? So, you know, I would just strongly encourage you and implore you to support these lot-split amendments so they can actually be used, because I am, you know, going bankrupt in what's supposed to be a buy-right project. But because of just nuances in just the way things are written, I strongly support the ADU revisions. And I think upper story setbacks need eliminated and you should make just all side setbacks four feet. Right now, a house needs 30% across. So we have all of these outdated codes that make it really difficult to create badly needed housing. You know, I'm just trying to create something beautiful where people have indoor/outdoor space. Again, it's small-scale development and so these are badly needed so the city doesn't engage in further legal harassment, you know, which has just taken thousands of our taxpayer dollars, when all we're trying to do is create badly needed housing. So very grateful for your consideration tonight. Happy to answer any questions if you want to. I didn't realize this would be about this.
Yeah, I just have one question for you, sir. Are you planning to live there?
Yes.
Okay.
But the owner occupancy requirement is, is, is being used as a wedge, because it's.
I don't want to, I, I, there's, because of pending litigation, I don't want to get into that conversation. I just wanted to understand if you were planning to live there. And you state that you created an LLC to protect yourself against contractors.
Correct.
Have you, just out of curiosity, and if you don't want to answer, you don't have to, have you complied with the, the new law that requires LLCs to submit their beneficial ownership to FinCEN?
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. But to your question, it's just, the owner occupancy is trying to say that you can't do vacant lots. That it's trying to, it's all of this type of stuff.
I, I understand where you're coming, I just was curious about those things. Thanks, sir.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Christina Navarro and I am proud to Unite Here Local 11 and I am resident for Santa Monica. And nos encontramos en una crisis de vivienda, no de hoteles. I need to read. No de hoteles. Y eso es lo que la ley de viviendas como estas pretendían abordar, aunque se pueden, se puedan realizar mejores, mejoras y las procesos de aprobación de proyectos de viviendas. Son los procedimientos de desarrollos existentes y los que funcionan bien para los proyectos hoteleros. Por favor, no permitan que los hoteles utilicen el proceso de aprobación, administración.
Hi, my name is Christina Navarro. And that's, well, that part was in English. But so, as she said, we're in a housing crisis, not a hotel crisis, and that is what housing laws like these were intended to address. Even if there are improvements to make to the housing project approval process, it's the existing development procedures that work well for hotel projects. Please don't allow hotels to use the administrative approval process.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Heather Thomason. This ordinance to lift the owner occupancy requirement for lot splits will not improve housing affordability. It will only benefit developers. The owner occupancy requirement in SB 9 and SB 450 was specifically included to prevent developer exploitation. Without this requirement, developers with all cash will outbid regular home buyers, split lots and build dense luxury housing that maximizes their profit. With no affordability requirement, it will result in zero truly affordable new homes. This ordinance will drive up land costs, making housing even more expensive for everyone, especially families seeking single-family homes. Some argue that increasing supply will lower prices, but this oversimplified economic view ignores that demand for living in Santa Monica is essentially unlimited. When demand is inelastic, as it is here, increasing luxury supply doesn't lower overall prices. Perhaps more importantly, contrary to the purpose stated by the council people who proposed this ordinance of bringing city code into compliance with changes arising from SB 450, this ordinance contradicts rather than complies with SB 450, as noted. SB 450 states that agencies shall require lot-split applicants to sign an affidavit committing to occupy one unit as their principal residence for at least three years. This reads as a mandate by the state, not an optional provision. The proposed new city ordinance directly conflicts with this requirement. It is unclear to me how implementing this ordinance could actually be legal, but in any case, it is misguided at best to suggest that this ordinance is in any way required by updates arising out of SB 450, since SB 450 explicitly affirms the owner occupancy requirement. Please advise against this ordinance. It won't help affordability. And please ask the city attorney to examine further whether this ordinance is legal under current state law. If it isn't, please expect it to be challenged. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Elizabeth Van Denbergh. Van Denbergh.
Thank you.
And Daniel Ghorhoff.
It, it's so good to see all of you again and meet some of you. My name's Elizabeth Van Denbergh and good evening to all the planning commissioners. I'm the chair of the Wilshire, Montana Neighborhood Coalition, commonly known as Wilmont, which is a R2 and R3 neighborhood. I'm interested in all things to do with R2, R3 and R4s, just because, why not? I'm interested also in anything that impacts my neighborhood directly and indirectly. If you do not, if you do not read the letter I sent in early today, I don't blame you. The points I tried to make with respect to the loose and zoning ordinance consistency are, I'm going to strike my AB 821. The loose says about the maximum allowable density for an R2 district. The only thing I could find in the loose was the following. For R2, low-density housing vision, maximum allowable density up to 29 units per net residential acre, exclusive of city and state density bonuses, consistent with the scale of existing development. For R3, medium-density housing, maximum allowable density of 35 units per net residential acre, exclusive of city and state density bonuses, with nothing being said about consistency with the scale of existing development. So in 2010, there was clear knowledge that the city and state density bonuses would be a part of this equation. The staff report has a simple conclusion. For R2, the loose tier-two density is equal to one unit per 1,500 square feet. And R3, the loose tier-density is equal to one unit per 1,250 square feet. For transparency purposes, I request that the source and/or equation that yielded these two numbers be part of the package that goes to city council. Let's talk about timing. Tonight, the planning commission is presented with this item. Yesterday, on Tuesday night, I attended a Zoom community meeting for the 745-749 17th Street project. The land use consultant was using the proposed one-unit The land use consultant was using the proposed one-unit-per-1,500-density number for the R2 project. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Van Denbergh. Hello, Ms. Van Denbergh?
I've never been asked a question before. It's so exciting. Thank you.
Been back in so long.
The what?
We haven't seen you here in so long.
I know. It's been a rough, but rough five years, guys. I'll just tell you that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, everybody's...
I saw you back, though. My only question was, it seemed like you had another point you were about to make.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to say that, and thank you, Commissioner Reese, I appreciate that. The guy who's doing this project, this hasn't passed this body or passed the City Council, and he's using 1,500 for an R2 building going up in Noma, which of course they're very unhappy about. So I just don't understand how he can use a 1,500 number per maximum density in an R2 building, new build, where we haven't, you haven't looked at it, you haven't agreed to it, and the City Council hasn't agreed to it. So how did he get that number? He stated it in open meeting. The other thing I'm not too crazy about is where is OPA in this? I will say the staff report definitely said that it's not here, but why is that? OPA, OP 2, 3, and 4 are exactly the same as R2, 3, and 4. Why are they missing from this document? Thank you.
That was her. I think we're done.
Okay.
Are we done? Yeah, that concludes public comment. We know that we're done. Is there any other public comment?
What was the name?
Did we miss anybody?
Yeah.
What's her name?
Okay.
What do we...
Hold on, we have one missing. Shit. Well, why don't you come up and we'll let her, we'll vote, let her speak. Anybody?
Yeah.
Everybody in favor, let her speak. If we don't have one of these, will you fill it out afterwards?
They didn't because Daniel left, so there was one empty spot. That's what I think.
Just...
That's why we're giving two hands, so I don't know. Okay, my name is Lupe Stevenson. I've been working at the Fermont Miramar for 25 years, living in Santa Monica for 18, in one of those apartments, low-income apartments, with my three kids. My three kids, they cannot leave the house because the economy is so bad, and the rents are very expensive. Like I say, I live in Main and Pacific. Last, two weeks ago, I was walking my dog, and I saw one lady picking up chairs, and she asked me, can I pick it up? And I said, yeah, take it. I just lost my house in Pacific Palisades. She broke my heart because she told me where she stayed, she don't have furniture. Her friend let her stay there. That's why she was picking up those chairs. So please, don't pass more hotels, pass low-income apartments, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
That's it. Let's close the public hearing. Let's close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Close it.
Let's close the public hearing, and let's take a short 10-minute break.
Just call for a...
That's the close of the public hearing. Now we'll move on to the Commission's discussion and potential motions.
What we want to do is take a quick break.
Yeah.
So we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Can we reconvene, please?
Because they called the commission back to order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commission is called back to order. Sean, we do...
Okay, so the Chair, just confirming that, I'm just not stepping up right here. There's no usurpation going on. The Chair has asked me to, with the concurrence of the Vice Chair, to lead us through the discussion and what we're going to do, as we have done in the past. the discussion and what we're going to do, as we have done in the past, is we're going to take up the policy questions. We're going to do straw polls on each of the items so that we can get language for staff. And we are then going to hand it back to Chair Tolkien for a final up or down vote on the package. We do want to open up, you know, I think we do want to open up discussion. I will point out, I just will say, I've been advised by the Planning Director and the Planning Manager that Council has given directed the direction that this go back to Council in April. So we don't have to rewrite resolutions on the dais. What we've been asked to do is, I mean, if we have language, we can propose it. But to the extent that we might not have language for something, we should come up with a plain language recommendation to Council. And that will be included in the staff report as feedback from the Planning Commission. Is that, is that okay with everyone? Is everyone okay with starting with the policy questions? I do then want to circle back to everybody to make sure that we're not leaving out something that somebody wanted to bring up. But for the sake of coming through, you know, making it through what staff needs us to answer, let's start with that. So Ross, do you want to take us through it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe we're going to start with the first four policy questions regarding ADUs and JDUs.
That's policy question three.
Yeah, we ordered, in the staff report, it was number three. But for organization of the presentation, we ordered it differently. But I can start with number one if it's easier.
What's your pleasure, folks?
Your pleasure.
Ross's way. We'll do it Ross's way. Great.
My favorite way.
Love it. Haven't led us wrong yet.
So the first policy question that we came across in the presentation was regarding the additional ADU that is allowed under the housing element. Currently, it is only implemented as an attached, sorry, a detached rental unit. But we are asking the question that because state law does not allow for a new attached to an existing home, so a brand-new addition, to continue to allow that option, but to fold it in under that R1 program. So whenever you're doing a, that second detached, or maybe the attached, which would be one of these versions, that we would allow it, but fold it in under the R1 Housing Element Program to de-restrict it as a rental unit. So the question, a vote for, yeah, oh, sorry.
Sorry, just, does everyone, in order to avoid re-presenting the item, does everyone understand the question before us on policy question three?
Yes.
Okay, does, is, is there anything anybody wants to discuss? Or are we ready to sort of indicate a preference?
Ready.
Great, so we'll start with Commissioner Chaco and we'll go around the table. Please say yes, no, or alternative.
Yes.
Yes, we allow it to be attached.
I'll say yes.
I'll say yes.
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 Great, let's keep going.
So this was the second policy question we came across, but policy question number one, regarding the continued exemption of all ADUs from floor area.
Everybody understand the what's before us? Great, any questions or additional thoughts?
I have thoughts.
I do too, but let's just see if, we have four votes for yes before we go on. Commissioner Chaco?
Yes.
You can say thoughts.
I have qualifications.
Got it, I'll say qualifications.
I'll say yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm excited to hear about qualifications.
Okay, so now we'll come back to Commissioner Fresco. That's four votes for yes, just for staff.
If we're going to exclude them from floor, from FAR, I wanted to suggest that we don't include ADUs. We, if it's going to be 150 square foot ADU, that we don't exempt it. Because that way, it kind of pushes people, if they want to get more units, to try to get more quality units in.
So state law will always exempt that size of ADU since we, if they do the state law route.
Right.
But if you're saying under our local program, if they provide a 150 square foot ADU, it's not exempt, but 151, I mean, is there a?
You want 220?
220.
So if it's too small of an ADU, count it.
Right.
So, so if I may ask a clarifying question?
But if, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just want to ask a clarifying question. So this would be only the unit that would be, only the ADU that would be added under the city's local program, under the housing element. Because the rest would be regulated by state law and up to the.
I'd like to, I'd like to propose an alternative to the, to your suggestion that I think gets.
It's kind of upside down, but I was.
I think I have a different suggestion.
I just have one other thing that went with it is the four-foot separation also perturbs me because if you open two doors in that four-foot space and they're too close to each other, they'll hit each other and that's not cool. So I prefer six feet for those things. And I also have a personal experience with a four-foot side yard that has a door. So I'm traumatized by it.
An additional kind of policy direction beyond just the policy question.
Right, but if we're going to exempt things and give more, we, I feel like, I guess my goal is I want to get more too.
So I would like to suggest that since we're offering a freebie under the deed restriction, that the freebie be a minimum of 220.
For sure.
That's, that would, instead of not exempting 150, I think it's easier and cleaner to say that the freebie has to be 220 and up. So if it's going to be, if it's going to be a rental unit, it has to be a rental unit that's a little bit bigger.
You're thinking more clearly than I.
I support that.
Support that.
Thank you.
Are we, you cool with that?
Yes.
Josh?
Yeah?
No?
I don't have a issue with someone who wants to electively build a smaller unit. So I, like I've said, I've been in much smaller units. It can be done. If that's the only way to shoehorn a unit into a site, to create a unit, I wouldn't want to restrict that. So I'm fine with the existing proposal.
Okay.
Tell me again, you're saying that if, for the free, the free, the city-sponsored.
The city-sponsored freebie.
Which has to be a rental. We're saying it has to be at least 220, 220.
I'm getting a face from Jing.
Thing we're doing right now, we're going through mass process re-engineering across the whole city to simplify and be less artisanal.
Yeah.
In our code for the ease, just imagine the people doing these ADUs. They are homeowners accessing city services for the first time in our permitting process. They just want to know, what can I do? And I really would encourage us to think from, you know, the homeowner's perspective of the many, many rules that Santa Monica has. And not get super detailed unless, you know, there's a great policy reason for it. That's just giving you context as to the work that is going on in the permitting process right now. And especially when, you know, overall as a city, we have tried to incentivize ADUs.
And, and I think that's a valid concern, obviously. But I would say, I wonder how that impacts our, it's a housing element program. I don't know if it has a negative impact to it or it.
Well, our housing.
No impact, because I don't think a lot of people are going to build at 150 feet. So I don't really worry about that.
The cost per square foot is too high to build, to make building at 150 square feet worth it.
Right, so I don't want to, that's why I just want to tweak our, I don't want to hurt a program that's already having trouble.
Right. Prefab is coming in at 600, 600 bucks a square foot, minimum. So. Could I, as a compromise, could I suggest that we clearly have support for the, for the staff recommendation? Could there be included in the report to Council that Commissioners express concern about the livability of the small, the smallest size? And the safety of, of the four-foot, you know, safety and usability of the four-foot separation? And let's punt it to Council, but that way, at least we're on record expressing that concern.
What I was going to say about the four-foot separation is that maybe we can just say that egress and ingress entryways can't be in those alleys, they have to be on other elevations.
That's fair.
Or the doors have to be offset or something.
Doors have to be offset.
Or doors, but even, I mean, the condition I'm thinking of has, it has a door on a four-foot thing. And in this particular case, it's also a few feet up, it has a foundation. And so there's like a step, and then there's like a three-foot landing, and then there's like one foot where you can kind of go sideways.
If we get into the micro-artisanal design, we will not, we will never get out of here tonight. And I don't think we can hold ourselves accountable for bad design.
But six feet, but six feet.
But we can't mandate six feet because the state won't let us.
Four votes moves the item.
Exactly, let's keep going, all right.
So the next policy question, we, just to confirm, we had four votes for yes, continued.
Which I'm going to make mine a fifth vote. I don't know if you want to be a sixth vote for yes.
No, I don't.
No, okay, fine.
So the third policy question we came across, but policy question number two, was regarding the expansion of ADUs that are converted from existing space. So this was to allow for more than 150 square foot expansion that state law requires us to do. But as long as that a bigger expansion apply, complies with code. So four-foot side and rear, the sizes, all of that.
Any, any noes here?
I'm just going to ask this question, that, it's still exempt from FAR?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it would be an expansion up to the size that it could be, so it's, they don't get more. It's just more flexibility.
Yeah.
Any objection here?
No.
Great.
Six out of six.
The last one for ADUs is for upper-story outdoor space. So again, as a summary, when these limitations were.
I'm sorry, Ross, I'm just going to, like, let's just, nobody, anybody good with applying underlying zoning to six standards for consistency? Bearing in mind Jing's warning that this is, homeowners calling the city for the first time and they've probably, maybe they've read their district standards, maybe they haven't, but.
Well, I think we need upper-story decks if we're going to have all these little houses with four feet in between. I'm, you know.
We'd have them.
Yeah, well, you know, I called up on my computer that development on Ocean Park Boulevard that was built in the 40s that everyone thinks Donald Douglas built, which he didn't. But it was like the city's first example of high-density housing. They're all separated by six feet and there are these 1,500 square foot.
But this is not outdoors spaces, is it? We're talking about upper outdoors spaces.
I'm just talking, the whole thing, I'm just giving you a vision.
Okay. We good with this one?
Yes.
Let's keep going.
That ends the ADU policy questions. The last policy question is regarding, you know, given the prioritization of standards being modified if needed to accomplish or to achieve certain sizes and certain number of units.
So are you, I'm going to ask a question.
Sure.
What you're saying is if they come and say, we can't do it, this list means the first thing you'll offer them is increased FAR. The second thing, okay.
This is staff's recommendation, you can obviously add another one, remove one, maybe reorder. But again, we did this recommendation thinking of, how would this structure be viewed from the street? So there, that's why there is a kind of a logic to this order.
My, I'm going to ask the question from the perspective of the first-time homeowner applicant, or anybody's applicant, increased FAR, does this mean it could, are you going to offer them higher, wider, higher or wider first? Like, when you.
So the increased FAR will be, FAR is going to have to go along with another one of these standards.
That's what I'm asking it.
So therefore, okay, we're going to give you an extra 100 square feet to get your FAR, but are you doing that via a reduced setback or another floor? So these aren't just working in a vacuum. They will need to kind of build off of each other. But this kind of aligns the direction of the deviation from standards.
Okay, Commissioner Chaco?
Question.
I have a question. Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought you were voting.
Question, so on item number two, so that's reducing it below four feet?
If you, they could do three feet, if that's what they needed to get like the increased FAR, for example.
So my only recommendation is that we demote item two a little lower.
How far?
Maybe do four or five, below parking.
Okay.
Yeah. Is this item number, policy question five?
Correct.
Okay. The, the, the list in the staff report is different than this list, if I'm not mistaken.
It's still the same policy question, we just had ordered them where they showed up in the presentation. But this is not about ADUs, this is under the additional revisions. Or sorry, it's under the policy question.
Well, the front, in the staff report, the front yard setback is.
Oh, yeah, we originally didn't order them in the staff report, but staff kind of took a stab for the presentation for our recommended prioritization. So we did reorder them for the presentation, sorry, I understand what you're asking.
Okay. So I have a question on the parking portion of that. They just changed the rules for, for the transit to 20-minute headways. Is there any part of the city that doesn't get covered?
There's still some R1 that it doesn't cover.
Okay, because most park, most people are just going to say 2097, I don't have any parking required. But this is for that.
Good amount of the city.
This is, this is the small part. Okay. So I think this is, this is a good list and I'm comfortable with Commissioner Chaco's movement of this building separation down.
Two to the new five, or below parking.
My, my one concern, coming out of a home where I grew up, is that in Santa Monica, is that there was a, there was a side setback that could only work as a driveway as long as the neighbor provided the easement. And a, a new pharaoh arose in Egypt, a new easement, a new neighbor moved in and said, no, why am I going to give that away? And so the garage is literally inaccessible from the street. And the, the folks have to park in front of their home or on the, on the street. So, so I don't want to get into it. But it was, yeah, it's, it was nasty and they tried.
Been here too.
But, so my concern about the reduced side setback is that I would not want to create that, I would not want to allow that to happen again. I would want to make sure that we're preserving vehicular access to the backyard.
I'm not sure how they built on top of the easement, but if there was.
I mean, it wasn't really an easement, it was just like, yeah, you can do, like, they never actually resolved it.
That's why I need the easement.
Yeah, so it was a verbal easement at some point. But my point is, can we ensure that a reduced side setback does not prohibit, like if, you know.
Access to parking.
Vehicular access to the rear.
Try to find a way, I'm not exactly sure how that would fit completely, but.
If you had a parking requirement and you built a building in front of it, you'd violate your parking requirement and you couldn't get your building permit.
Yeah.
So I don't, I think you have a very unique situation where some nice, nice neighbor said, hey, I'll let you drive on this half of my property.
Right.
Or this court, this five feet. It's pretty rare, I mean.
Isn't that prescriptive easement?
Well, I mean, what I'm, what I'm getting into is we see a lot of, we see a lot of older homes in Santa Monica that have very tight setbacks. And so we want to avoid going back to that era.
Sure.
And so I would not want to reduce, offer the reduced side setback. I would want to reduce, and I would reduce the front setback before I reduce the side setback, I think. Want to be very careful there.
I'll allow you guys to weigh in on that reshuffling.
I, I'm also flexible to move the reduced front setback higher up on the list. I was.
Comfortable with that.
I don't travel to Europe, but I was in Georgetown recently and.
Great.
You have no front setbacks and it's a very charming neighborhood.
Lovely, yeah.
Is there like, how much are you comfortable with moving it up? I mean, not, not in the order, but I mean, would, could you cut the 30-foot front setback in half?
I'll leave that up to you guys to figure out, but.
Can we vote on that before we start doing?
Sure, I was just clarifying, like, if that was an option.
I, I don't see the, the front yard as necessarily a sacrosanct type of thing, yeah.
If I may comment on that, I, normally I would agree with you, but I think I'd be concerned about consistency because I think it does affect the character of the street. If there's just a few odd exceptions.
Potentially.
Also, I think that open verdant front yards provide a certain kind of pedestrian experience. And we're talking about diversity of housing and diversity of neighborhoods. And we need that kind of neighborhood too. So we have plenty of neighborhoods that don't have front yard setbacks or where it's not as important. But in our one neighborhoods, I think it is important.
Well, okay. Yeah, I was, go ahead. I was just going to say, I don't, I would rather take a 30-foot setback and turn it into a 25-foot setback than reduce the side setbacks, right? I'm not saying I want to bring it all the way up to five feet, but between.
but between 30 and 25, even 20, you can still get a lovely front presentation that is.
Do we still have 30-foot setbacks?
Yeah, so in the R1 district, honestly, it's very artisanal, block by block, that we have anywhere between 10, which is rare. I would say the typical between 20 and 30. Sometimes in our Palisades track, we have up to 40 feet. They are street by street, kind of, I'm not exactly sure the genesis of why every block has a little bit of a different one.
Tell you, but I won't.
Oh.
Please, no, please.
Ross, is there some prohibition on people paving their front yards and parking their cars?
So we do have a maximum paving limitation in the R1 of typically no more than 50% of it can be paved.
Okay.
We also did cover that sort of front yard.
Where do you do your car repairs, so? In the front backyard, no, no setback left.
So I mean, my, my argument for art, for going after the front yard first is from a practical standpoint, when you're working around your house, just bringing, like just a normal trash can down that four feet is difficult. So if you reduce it, it makes it very hard to actually work around your house.
Yeah.
So I think having more flexibility in the front makes a little bit more sense. I am concerned about character, but we're not talking about going to zero.
Right.
Got it, a minor.
Right.
Expansion.
So could we bring reduced front setback up to number three?
Three.
So it would be.
Really?
So it'd be increased FAR, reduced setbacks, and then front setback.
Or how about, how about this? Just move the, the side and rear setbacks farther down so that at least.
It's this list.
Okay, oh, got it, I'm looking at the wrong list here.
Put them on the bottom.
Um, yeah, but move, just move those farther down and then move, reduce front setback to number five.
Behind parking?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, prioritize front yard over parking.
I'll restate it, increased FAR is number one, reduced building separation is number two, reduced setbacks is number three.
Well, wait.
No, you had moved separation down below parking.
Building separation down.
Down, sorry, FAR, setbacks, parking, building separation.
Building height.
Building height, front setback.
Side and rear.
Rear setback, side setback.
Okay.
Yes? Everybody cool with that?
Not me, but.
Just to be a, just to be me, why reduce setbacks? Why are we moving that down? Cuz reduced setbacks in the rear, like.
It's already four feet.
It's already only four feet.
Yeah, but if it's three feet in the rear, who, who.
Try a parking, try putting your trash cans out. They'll end up in the alley.
If there is an alley.
If there is an alley, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna fight that one now.
That was a huge.
They end up in the alley anyway.
I know, but with four feet, you can at least hold them there.
Okay.
Cool? You got that order cuz we flipped rear and side, so sides always.
FAR, step back, parking, separation, height, front, rear, side.
Cool. Moving on.
That is it for policy questions, I believe. So now I guess this would be maybe additional commission direction?
Well, we were asked about, well, I guess we, the public has asked us to inveigh on owner occupancy.
Let's go there now.
Yeah, let's go there.
Public here now, let's talk about that.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, anybody have thoughts on owner occupancy?
Yeah, where's the state law on this?
So state law requires owner occupancy for lot splits for a.
Three years.
Applicant of three years, they intend to live on there for three years. A council's direction was to remove that state law requirement.
Okay, but, so state law right now says you have to have that.
It includes it in the requirement, yes.
It, it's a requirement.
Mm-hmm.
How can we make it a non, non requirement?
I think the view is that it's more permissive than state law, but I will.
So this is, this goes back to what we were speaking about earlier. This is the subject of litigation. So if you would like to, for policy reasons, say one way or the other, we would fully encourage the commission to discuss that from a policy perspective.
Got it.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a policy observation. I do not agree that removing the owner occupancy requirement will make housing more accessible. I don't, I think precisely somebody mentioned the Palisades and the need for duplexes in the Palisades as we rebuild. It's a very controversial conversation, but absolutely for people who are underinsured, they need, they want to live somewhere and they're gonna lot split their parcels so that they can figure out a way to make their mortgage, get their value back and cover the gap between what their insurance is paying out and what they owe the bank. I think my impression is that there is a problem in state law with respect to trusts and LLCs that are controlled by living human beings. And that's the reason that I asked, I don't know his name, the, the guy from Stanford, whether he had complied with the FinCEN requirement, the, the legal FinCEN requirement for beneficial owners to disclose themselves. In my view, we should retain the owner occupancy requirement and we should explicitly state that someone who wants to exercise that right needs to demonstrate that they are the beneficial owner of the trust, either the beneficiary or beneficial owner of a trust or the beneficial owner of an LLC. And they can document that by showing their filing with FinCEN, which is not being enforced right now, but it's still legally required. And the city can impose that, say, if you want the benefit of this law, you, you, you have to show us that you've done that and define an applicant as either a natural person or a beneficial, beneficiary or beneficial owner of a trust or an LLC. And I think that squares the circle and achieves our policy aims.
For, for Lamin's, what you're trying to, what you're saying is even though it's owned by a trust, you, you want somebody to prove that it's an individual, individual property owner who's gonna end up living on the property in the end.
Right, and that they are connected to that trust in some connectable way. Yeah.
Right, so to be clear, if I understand, the property could be owned by something, by an entity that is not a natural person, right? So it either is a natural person or not a natural person. If it's not a natural person, you would like this beneficial ownership concept injected in there, either the beneficiary of a trust or the beneficial owner of an LLC or similar.
Right.
Is that?
Exactly, so you have, well, I mean, typically in sort of house, like for homes, right? You have, you have people who put their homes into grantor trusts. You have people who put their homes into like revocable trusts, right? The so-and-so living trust. So legally, it's owned by a trust, but the trust shares a social with the individual.
How does, how does this prevent speculation, so?
It prevents it because you're still attaching the property to a human being who's required to live there, under state law.
Okay.
So that's one. You have your intentionally defective grantor trust, which, which exists when people, like the parents wanna transfer the property to the kids, but the parents still wanna live there, so they're gonna pay rent. Again, you can, you can actually identify the, the person who's.
Connection.
You can, you can make the connection. Then you have the irrevocable trust where there's literally a list of people who are the beneficiaries of the trust in the trust and they can show the connection. And then on the LLC side, if you own 25% or more of an LLC, any LLC in the United States for any reason, technically you are now required to tell the US Treasury your name and your address and how much of it you own. And this went to the Supreme Court, which allowed it to go into effect. So anybody who has 25% or more of an LLC presumably has a document that says they're attached to that LLC.
I have a question about state law as it pertains to what we, the other part of the conversation, which is the ability to put five units, a primary residence, and then four ADU, JDU's. Is there an owner occupancy requirement for that?
Not for ADUs, but there is an owner occupancy requirement for JDU's. The owner needs to either live in the JDU or the main house. But there's no owner occupancy for ADUs.
So what's the maximum number of units you can put on with not having owner occupancy?
I guess then you wouldn't get a JDU, so three ADUs plus the single-family house.
Okay, so hypothetically, I could buy a property in Santa Monica, tear it down and build four units and call one a primary and then I'd have three ADUs. So aside from the title policy and the ownership structure, from a neighborhood point of view, you still have four units there, whether they're renters or owners.
Yeah, there's, there's two paths to get to four, kind of the ADUs or.
Yeah, so really what, what this, what this change is, is saying is, you, you can, basically it's for the condo-ization only. I mean, you can still put four units one way or the other. I mean, you can design it differently, understanding maybe you could fit five or six, but like, let's just keep it to four. You can always put four units on a property in Santa Monica, whether you own it or not. It's just a matter of whether you've subdivided that piece of land.
Mm-hmm, there might be some additional limitations on ADUs that wouldn't apply to the duplexes, like the size limitation potentially. But yes, you could get to four.
So, so the only role, so then the, the, the only real kind of accretive benefit of this change that council is putting forth is to put more than four units on a parcel. And is that, right, I mean, potentially.
The only, so this owner occupancy removal would just be through the establishment of lot splits and duplexes. So it's not exactly tied to the ADU path, if we will. And as far as through the lot split and duplex path, if you are a parcel greater than 10,000 square feet, you can get more than four units. It's a housing element program that the city enacted to allow for these larger parcels to essentially do a little bit more.
So, so aside from the homeownership aspect of it, the only real policy decision that we need to figure out is, do we want on lots greater than 10,000 units, do we want to give the ability for a non-owner occupied owner of site to put more than four units? Is that really what we're talking about?
I mean, because you're saying if they don't go through this path, they could just do it via ADUs in a different way.
What, what's the marginal benefit of waiving this provision in state law?
I couldn't ascertain, all I can say is council's direction was to incentivize the creation of more diverse housing opportunities in our highest occup, highest opportunity areas. That would be the benefit in council's.
There's, there's a, HCD does a map of, of the entire state of California and they divide every single census tract into high and highest resource areas. And the entire city of Santa Monica is either highest resource or high resource. Both are basically the same thing. So the entire city is basically a high resource area. So what's the diff, you know, what's that euphemism for? What's that, to me, calling that we want to put units in a highest resource area when the entire city is highest resource, what, what do you think the policy goal is there?
I think it's the affirmatively furthering fair housing. Getting more units in the R1, the highest of the high, we'll say, areas of the city.
For, but yeah, but the only thing you really accomplish is, is that you're allowing on larger unit, larger parcels greater than 10,000 square feet to put more than four units. And there's probably, how many, how many 10,000 square foot parcels are there in Santa Monica?
I don't know off the top of my head, but that's not the normal size.
No. Yeah. If, man, I mean, I think to, to Commissioner Hamilton's point, you're functionally simply enabling speculation on those lots. Because the incentive, if you're gonna, if you're gonna maximize the utility of those lots, I can pretty much guarantee you that those, the subdivided units are not gonna be accessible to the people for whom affirmatively furthering fair housing is intended.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I just think from a policy point of view, there, you know, there, there's a lot of people concerned about this issue and, you know, I, I see both sides of it. I want density. I, I think that, but there's a way to density without upsetting the public because really what this is about is, if you really boil it down, is five, five units on a 10,000 square foot parcel. And as you said before, in the four, you know, and in most of our experience so far, at least in the four years that we've had this kind of capability, we haven't seen a lot of these applications coming through. So the, the actual like number of units that will, incremental number of units that will be created by waiving this provision or in state law is really not much at the end of the day. So I would rather just vote no on it and, and allow the, the public to feel heard.
If I may, I, I would also think that, given what we've been advised regarding pending litigation, I mean, I still stand by what I said about the beneficial owner because I do think it's a problem in state law as well. It may be that the council's best move is to take an advocacy position with the state with respect to pending legislation and needed legislative fixes. This, this issue with, for example, trusts and LLCs ought to be solved at the state level. The state ought to clean it up for everybody so there's no real question for anybody in the state of California about what it means to own a property. And it's, I'm uncomfortable with putting the city in the position of appearing to go beyond state law in a way that it may not have the flexibility to do at a time when we've just been asked to make things simpler for staff. And I don't think we can afford extra lawsuits in general. So I'm comfortable with a no, but I also think, rather than just saying no, I would say if the council wants to pursue this conversation, I would encourage it to exercise its legislative advocacy, to, to, to utilize legislative advocacy, given the number of bills that are pending on the state legislative floor right now related to owner occupancy. Why go down this road when by January 1st, 2026, we might actually have clarity from above? That'd be my argument. Well, it is north of us.
So, I mean, I have a couple of thoughts about this. One is I'll just say that, I mean, this was our best, trying to do the lot splits and emphasize lot splits was our ability, was our best foot forward at trying to get more density and more diversity.
Yeah.
Where we really, what we should have done was rezone some areas for some multifamily. But, but there, that was really a political non-starter.
Right.
So when we hear people saying about how either way we go, we're going to affirmably fair, promote fair housing, it, it's not really, we're not really moving the needle on it. It's just one comment I want to make. So, and I also, and I also, I guess the other part of this, if we're in pending litigation, I'm not sure that we as a commission should be making a recommendation one way or the other. We had the policy discussion, we should just abstain on the issue and let the, the court case go forward and let the council review this. Because I'm just afraid that if we put our finger one way or the other, it helps one side or the other. And I'm not smart enough at this point to know which side I'm.
I'm just uncomfortable in general with making a policy decision kind of in the dark because our staff and attorney's office can't speak openly about it. That's my, I, you know, I mean, I lean towards not changing it just in general, but I feel like doing it in this climate is a little bit, you know, we don't know what impact we're having.
What happens after three years? Can I condominiumize, you know, condominium, make it into condo, track map and sell off?
You can do condos before the three years, rent.
Right, so, so the way that the state law reads, you are required to sign an affidavit that you intend to live on the property for three years after the lot split is complete. So that is, that is the, the way that the state law reads.
And do you have to be the owner before the construction? Like to be, have been an owner for three years before the start of construction? Or you just have to promise to be an owner three years hence after?
Right, it is, it is actually, it's actually literally signing an affidavit to that effect, to that effect with respect to the intent.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion on this that, that, that we take no action on this.
Did you say table this?
I didn't say that, but that's what I mean, that we take no action. We're, we're abstaining from an action.
staff still has the direction from council to bring forward the black lines as presented under the 16 item, so I just want to clarify that. Obviously, you, obviously, this position that you're taking would be forwarded to the council in the staff report, but I do want to just kind of make that piece clear.
I I I don't want to. There's a motion in a second, but but I don't, I I I actually don't want to give up our role here. I think it is unwise to move forward with the owner occupancy changes in the totality of the situation. I would like to see clarifications around beneficial ownership, but I don't want to take no action. I I actually think I'd like to, the council has no compunction about, you know, disagreeing with us and overruling us, but I think if if we have concerns about this change, we should say so, and I would like to say so. I I don't think, I don't think the time is ripe to make this change. I think it adds a legal burden to the city. I think it does not accomplish the goals that the council wants to accomplish, and I think it and I I think it, th- those are the two reasons and 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 I think there are other fixes for owner occupancy that are more pressing, like beneficial ownership clarification. So to the extent that the council wants to express itself, I would like it to go via legislative advocacy and not zoning ordinance red line.
So we won't take an official action, but we'll just state our opinion?
Well, I think, I think what has to happen is we have to vote on my.
Yeah.
Mine, I mean, his motion, and if it wins, then that's we take no action. If it loses, then we have to come back and make a decision.
Yeah, so let's, let's do, so the choices between taking no action or sending a recommendation, a different kind of recommendation to council, and we can.
We'll make a second, different.
We'll make a different motion, but let's just, we'll start from your end.
Well, I mean, again, my biggest concern is if there's a lawsuit happening and you're making a determination that's going to help one side or the other, and we're going to make a determination that's going to be on one side or the other. And I don't think we know enough about the details right now to be getting involved in that, in that lawsuit. I mean, there wasn't anything you said that I, that didn't make some sense to me. But I just, I I'm concerned when I'm, when I'm hearing that there's a lawsuit, we're talking about state laws and city laws, and we can't get impact, we can't talk to our attorney about it.
Okay.
Do you, do you think that if council understood the opinion of the planning commission that they may or may not, they may, they might make a different decision about this?
Good luck.
That's, I mean, I I understand that.
I think they'll listen. I mean, I think they have the same concern if they're in a, I think they'd be in the same concern if they're, I mean, let me rephrase that. If they're in a lot, if they're in a legal challenge, they're going to defend their, there's only one side they can come down on.
Okay.
I think they would always benefit from hearing from us.
Chair.
Unique spot. So let's call for the question, call for the question.
Well, no, we haven't, I'm taking the question. You're in no action, so what's the chair's position?
I'd like to hear what everybody.
No, but do you want to take no action, or do you want to express a different recommendation?
I would like to, at this point, given what's been said, I would take no action.
Okay. You would not issue any recommendation?
No.
One way or another?
No.
Okay. I I'm okay issuing a recommendation, okay? I'm okay issuing a recommendation.
No action.
I I would prefer not to take no action.
So it's, so the motion fails because it's three to three.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're back to considering a different motion. I'll make the motion that we advise the council against pursuing a change to the owner occupancy. Uh, let's keep it simple. We're going to advise the council against pursuing changes to owner occupancy rules on the grounds that there's pending legislation and we are trying to keep things simple for staff. You know, we we don't want to get out in front, we're, we're, we don't want to enter into, we we don't want to enter into the question of whether the city has the authority to override a state shall, a shall clause. So. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Keep it simple. Don't get into the lawsuit. Just, just say, don't make a change now because for those two, for those reasons. Pending legislation to resolve it and not entering into further legal challenges.
And I would just say, if if the goal is additional units and to place more per- unit production into R1 zones, I think the state has already given us a really sensible way of going about doing that. I am not opposed to what the state has already, what are, what tools they've already given. You know, but I you know, so I I don't understand, or at least I don't see the efficacy of making that change. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
I think I'll just add that. I guess I'm agreeing with you, Sean, that because of the existence of the lawsuit, I don't feel that there's sufficient information for me to support a change. So in other words, in the absence of our ability to discuss it, the status quo is preferable.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just have to say that that's exactly why I voted for the other motion, but I would vote for this too.
Okay.
Because of that.
Do we have a consensus here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is that clear to, okay, great. What's next? Oh, streamlining. We pull up streamlining?
That, this is it.
I have a thing.
I can do the definition of.
Yeah, I have a thing I want to say about streamlining. I know, we're, this is might be the last one, I mean, unless other people have things. So I don't like the streamlining idea. I know council has given direction. And I'm going to say a couple of things. Number one, I think we have a really good program in Bergamot. I think we should, uh, we should do the the two point, we should do the 12% that staff is recommending, but we should go up to 2.25 acres, not two acres, so I want to do that.
The Bergamot program, not the housing, okay.
Sorry, I'm putting, well, they're related to each other, so, but I will separate them.
Understood.
I'm, I'm putting, I'm gonna, okay, I won't, I won't get into the details on Bergamot. I think we have a good program on Bergamot that we should expand to other parts of the city. That is my point. I think there are other sites in the city, which I will not name, to avoid issues where the Bergam- a Bergamot-style program could be far more effective in yielding the outcomes that the city wants to achieve. Therefore, I I will vote against wholesale streamlining of the projects above one acre outside Bergamot, because I think we have not adequately studied the opportunities to achieve similar goals in other parts of the city. And I would like to request of the city council that it identify areas where a Bergamot-like program could be implemented and send it back to us to implement programs in those areas.
Can I ask a question about that? So if I understood you right, you're advocating for using the expanded administrative approval as an incentive to achieve some other policy objectives rather than just giving it away?
I think, that's right. I think we have a number of large sites, and I'll say, I'm going to repeat what I said about the airport planning process. I said, we can't, I said, two meetings ago or three meetings ago, I said, we should not do the, we should not do the airport without considering the context in which it sits. I'm going to keep it vague for reasons. But I think there may or may not be other sites in the city where those kinds of incentives could be accomplished, and I think it's premature to streamline everything wholesale, because once we do that, we can't undo it.
I have a few questions. I know it's late in the day, but there are a few things I don't quite understand about this proposal, so I'd like to ask those first of staff. Just want to make sure I understand in the context of the Housing Accountability Act and its definition of a housing project, that we are essentially removing, the the city of Santa Monica has its own definition for housing projects that qualify for for expedited review.
We have a definition of streamlined housing project, which had like the one acre cap, for example, where commercial could be located and we, the direction would to be removed that, but we.
And default to the state's definition.
Yes.
Understood. Just to clarify, the administrative approval as applied to the projects as defined under the Housing Accountability Act, they would only apply to projects that are not seeking to change zoning, they're seeking to get approved on the existing zoning based on existing objective standards, correct?
Correct.
And the definition of those housing projects do include mixed-use projects that could include a component of hotels as well.
Of non-residential, yeah.
But they still have to meet that state definition of a housing project. Does the administrative approval process require a community meeting in Santa Monica?
Does. Prior to application submittal, there is a community meeting requirement.
And how does staff deal with community comments that are received?
So that community meeting is ran strictly by the applicant, and part of their application submittal to us is a summary of all the comments that were received during that community meeting or kind of before, after it, and some, and a justification or a clear or response on how those comments may or may not have been addressed.
Understood. To, could, could you give me your sense of to what extent the Housing Accountability Act limits the city's discretion in approving or disapproving projects that come through administrative approval?
So I'm, so I'm happy to hop in. You actually are hitting on why the streamlining process started in the first place back in 2020. It's because if if a project meets code, the city is prohibited under the Housing Accountability Act from denying the project or reducing its density. So that is, that is the origin of the streamlining process that the city council wanted to take back in early 2020.
So a related question, to what extent can the city, whether it's staff or a committee or commission, impose conditions on those projects?
They can propose no condition that would result in the reduction of density that is proposed.
And and also because the nature of the streamlined processes, you can, it would only approve if you meet the objective standards, right? So it's a ministerial process. You can't have, a a condition by its very nature is discretionary potentially, right? So you cannot apply a condition to a ministerial permit.
Thanks. I think that answers all my questions, but I do have a comment going back to Sean, which you said, I in principle, support the act of giving away an expanded benefit in return for some, something, some policy objective, but in this instance, I honestly don't see a benefit for bringing a project like that to the commission with such limited discretion. I think that's my concern, but I don't know, I'd be glad to hear from the rest of you, based on your experience recently, of the extent to which you found that beneficial.
I mean, I think we just did in Bergamot, right? We had a whole conversation about how to streamline it in exchange for the housing mix and the the pathways.
But that was in the context of a zoning change, correct?
Right, but I'm saying let the city council identify those big opportunity sites and then send them back to us for, I believe there are a number of places in the city that have zone names, so we can do zone changes for those particular zones. Yeah, again, I don't want to get into it because, yeah. I'd like to have that iGendize separately. I also want to say, if I can, but other people may want to comment. I have one other reason. I want to speak to the hotel issue, but I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I don't. I agree with what the hotel workers are asking for, but for a reason different from why they're asking for it. I understand the labor argument here, and I support it as a human being. As a planning commissioner concerned with the city's economic development, and our planning director and I were talking during the break, when I joined the planning commission, we were doing these artisanal approvals of DRs where we would vest, uh, we would make sure that there was no ability to create corporate housing in these new housing projects. And at the time, I noticed that what was missing from the city code was a category of commercial lodging that was longer than a month and shorter than a year. At the time, we were dealing with a serious crisis, a housing crisis which we're still dealing with, and I understand why the bans on this kind of housing were placed. Fast forward through COVID, where our dependence on hotel-based revenue as a city cost us dearly because of the loss of that revenue. And now fast forward to 2025, when federal policy around tariffs and immigration is costing us tourism in very real ways. I am concerned, frankly, about creating inadvertently continued dependence on hotel-based revenue for the city's economic health. And taking hotels out of the streamlining, recognizing that that is a commercial activity, and we're talking about adaptive reuse to a certain extent, commercial activity, not residence, residence building activity, is a way for us to say, wait, do we really need this right now? And what I'd much prefer to do is have council come back and create a commercial lodging, midterm lodging, because the future of our economic, the future of an economic sustainability for Santa Monica may well not just be in hotels and tourism, but also in short-term stays for people who are coming to our city to do business here, to engage with the new research centers at UCLA on PICO, to engage with other business entities that are not rooted in retail, that are not rooted in the hotel and tourism business, but are rooted in other places. And we have to attend to the housing crisis. We have to build real housing for real people, but we also have to wind, find a way to bring people who don't want to move here, but need to spend three months, six months doing work here as visiting consultants, lecturers, professors, whatever, workers, and we want their dollars. We want them to spend them here, but we've got to figure out a way to make money on that, and I'd be much, much more interested in adaptive reuse and other zoning changes that leg- legalize and regulate that form of housing so that we can control it and make it work for us as a city. Sure.
I need some help figuring out. There's two things that we've just talked about. One is Bergamot, and it's the the large sites and how to get benefit out of the large sites. But there's this other part where it's Housing Accountability Act, and they revised the pro- the the housing definition in in Housing Accountability Act, and that's state law. And it's the one that's telling us, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. It's saying that we should have a new category, that at least 50% of a conversion building, it can go into residential as long as there's 500 units, right? That's one, that's one thing that we're, and that's just state law.
And we can't stop that.
Right, we can't stop that.
Agreed.
So then there's the the question of the thirty, the two-thirds, I mean, I don't know how we stop that from hotels, right? We can't, it's a streamlined project if it meets that.
If, if it's.
I just want a correction, correction. This is a definition of HAA. The streamlined housing project is a local definition. And so by removing the definition of a streamlined housing project, it will revert to this, basically. The new, the new normal will be this as the AA process.
And and if I can help shine a light on what I think, hearing the testimony, the concern is, so it's kind of like the combination of removing the one acre cap, right? In combination with basically aligning with the state law definition creates, what I understand is, you know, potentially like a gap where some portions of the non-residential could be hotels. So you see the exclusion for hotels only in this instance of what we'll call the 50/50 projects with at least 500 net new units. But what if you have a 50/50 project that has less than 500 net new units, for example? What if you have a two-thirds, one-third project on a site that is two or three acres, right? That's a lot of floor area. That's a lot of floor area, and in that instance, that would still meet the state housing definition. The HAA does not require those projects to go through a ministerial process, that was a City of Santa Monica policy choice, right? But it does obviously remove really any, you know, of the city's discretion in approving, so you do get the same outcome, but you go through a different process. So I think, you know, in hearing, just, I just want to clarify for the commission, I think that is the concern that was expressed during the testimony, is that although you see in the new addition to the state's definition of what's a housing project, exclusions for hotels, there are, what, what is being asked, I believe, was just a straight prohibition of hotels in the non-residential portion of any housing project.
Right. And I guess I'm curious how I can do that, if state law says that I have to, that a third of my project can be-
No, yeah, so, so I think that, for example, if you wanted to do that, we could, again, the, the ministerial process is a City of Santa Monica policy choice, so you could say in order to qualify for that, you know, you're still a housing project that's defined by state law, but in no case can the non-residential portion include a hotel.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And that would not be in violation of state law.
Yeah, it just means with, with the hotel, just with the change in the definition of HAA, it just means that we cannot deny or reduce the density of it, but you can require it to go through a public review process through a DRP.
Okay, I have a question.
So that would be something we can write in if the commission-
So we're willing to, we're willing to forego the construction of housing so that hotels can exert their sequoia leverage.
That's a discussion that the commission should have.
I just did. That's, to me, is what, what this is, what this is kind of allowing.
Say that again, I don't think I understood.
If there's a discretionary action, it has to have sequoia attached to it, and that is an attack point.
Understood.
And then, and so what we're doing is we're saying that that attack point is more important than building the housing than we're getting dinged for in our, in our, by the state, that we're not building enough housing. So I'm just putting that out there, that we're, it's important to us to support hotels in this community. But at the same time, it's important from the state's standpoint that we build housing so that we don't violate the housing law. And I'm seeing a little bit of a conflict in there.
And I suppose there's an argument that allowing a small component of hotels also makes a housing project more viable.
Potentially. I mean, but, but the whole thing, then it comes back to what Sean was talking about earlier, I mean, the fact of the matter is hotels aren't viable right now.
Well, yeah, it's usually the hotels that want the housing.
That was the justification for the 20th Street property, whether, you know, that's what they gave us, that the hotel made it viable. I have a, not to go too far down this rabbit hole, but just a point of clarification. So I noticed on, on, on the, two of the properties that went through in consent, they had units that were described as SROs. Is that, like, if, I mean, we all know what an SRO is, but I don't think it's like SRO in the same sense of like deeply affordable housing. Were those SRO units intended to be sort of like corporate units and that, would that, would that-
We had that, that is exactly the discussions we were having in 2018 and 2019, and that is exactly a controversy, and I don't, and I believe that, are these, yeah, this, we were obligated to extend those because, yeah, there were a whole bunch of these.
Would that accomplish, would those SRO units accomplish what you were trying to accomplish, which was like corporate housing that would allow for longer-term rentals, but, you know, less than a year?
Yeah, but you can't. So these, these projects that have been processed cannot be rented furnished.
So I, I, just answer Commissioner Hamilton's question, the two permits-
Not about those projects.
Theoretically, yes.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Current law bans it.
But just for background, as we indicated in the staff report, they're subject to a settlement agreement, there was some, some projects that were approved that were allowed to have market rate SROs, that is no longer the case.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So what is before us is two questions, really. It's the question of whether we support the elimination of the acre threshold, and secondarily, whether or not we want to do something with hotels. Let's take the elimination of the acre threshold. So I'm going to move that we not support the elimination of the acre threshold, and instead request that the council evaluate large-scale opportunity sites comparable to the Bergamot area for incentivize, for streamlining incentive opportunities to achieve our community goals. And then feel free to streamline the rest, but let's do that after we've ruled out the opportunity sites.
Can I ask a question on that? I guess this is really more a question for staff. How long will that process take?
I mean, provided we get council direction to do that, you know, and I assume if they were interested, they might give us a timeline, because they've been doing that quite recently, so, you know, whatever that direction comes out of that, I mean, it would just be prioritization of the work that we have, and we can, we can meet deadlines.
So would that involve doing a specific plan and a revision?
Not necessarily. I mean, if, if, if this direction was given from council to pursue something similar to the special incentive program, you know, we would certainly have to look at, and they would imagine, you know, some size threshold, we would take a look at wherever that exists in the city, and sort of think through, you know, the context and all those sorts of things. Bergamot was a very contained area, you know, reliant on an adopted plan, other areas may not have that, you know, so it's hard, hard to say, you know, what those benefits may be, you know, without having looked at where, what geographic area we're looking at.
Yeah, for, for the Bergamot, we looked at like unimix and open space, so we would need some sort of direction as to what benefits you guys-
I mean, we were driven by the, to achieve the vision, you know, that was set forth in the, in the Bergamot.
I mean, I might, I might use the Bergamot's plan as the example and see whether it ports to other sites.
Yeah.
Since the advantage is being offered to large sites, I think usually that is associated with getting pedestrian pathways.
Yeah.
I'm, I would second that, and I'm supportive of that, just from that, also the point you mentioned, that once you give that store away, you can't take it back.
I would just add to that for clarification to council that we did, in fact, oppose the one acre threshold at the time, and it was the former council that approved it, and that we're now trying to make lemonade.
Well, we now see a-
An opportunity.
An opportunity.
There's an opportunity, that's what I'm trying to say.
And I, at the time that the council imposed it, there was not a series of precedents from the state that any reversion was going to immediately put us in HCD jail, right? We did not, we, at the time, we were playing with the threshold, we thought, okay, you make policy, you change it, you fix it if it's not working, but now we have a one-way street, and so I don't want to race down that street and realize that we left all our marbles at the other corner.
Right, but just pointing out in our recommendation to council that it's a real opportunity that we're taking advantage of this moment.
Yeah, I think it's an important part of the message, that we're not just being known here.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, okay, okay. Are we all aligned on that? Sam? Okay. How about the hotels?
I think I can support the idea of withholding the expedited review for hotels without compromising the broader intent for advancing housing. And I still have a question to the extent to which that might affect housing, but we could leave that for another day.
I would agree with that, if only because it is something that we could back off on and become more permissive about in the future.
Okay. Anyone else? Josh?
Okay.
I mean, this is just to be consistent with state law, right?
We're still consistent with state law, we're just, we would have to approve this, you know, the huge ones, we wouldn't have this kind of discretion, but we're talking about the smaller projects that are not with 500 units.
Right.
Right? Where we would continue to exercise some discretionary authority. We would not be forced to do what we did the other week.
Yeah.
It would be explicit from day one that you can't pull that.
Put it, put a hotel use.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I actually think, I mean, we're in a down cycle with the economy, hotels may not be, you know, full at this point. I'm going to hold out hope that things change, so I am in support of those types of deals on 20th Street that included hotels, so I wouldn't want to take that out.
Okay, so we've got three yeses, a no.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I mean, I'm gonna be a no, it's gonna, we're gonna lose, but I just think that, that the housing is our bigger priority right now, frankly. And I, and I don't want to mess up a housing project, it's too important to our community.
Okay.
That was sort of where I was going with that, that question about that SRO unit type is, could, could we keep hotels incentivized and, but find an alternative path to create more, you know, that longer-term, midterm rental space and, and have like two lanes? So, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Do you feel like you could communicate this in your recommendation to council? Because I think both sides of this view need to be forwarded, right? I mean, there's, we have commissioners who are concerned about maintaining the priority on housing development and understanding that hotels can drive that, but at the same time, there are those of us who, A, don't want to give away the store before we've evaluated the store, and B, may not believe that continued reliance on hotels as a source of revenue is good for our overall economic health, and that we need other approaches to, we need to encourage other forms, that the 33% commercial in a mixed-use project should come from other sources of other types of uses, in addition to hotels, but, I mean-
I'm getting anxious.
Now we're getting involved with the market.
You know, also, this is Santa Monica.
No, I'm saying, these are the views that were expressed in the conversation. We had a four-two vote, but make sure that all the views that were expressed are included in the report without-
Can I give some history of, years ago, before I became a planning commissioner, we looked at Bergamot station development options.
Yeah.
Hotel was part of that, and I think that's a viable, and given the research things that may be going on and people coming in, it could be, you know, even more viable than housing, all housing.
Actually, I'm inclined to, to change my position on that, more in favor of not excluding hotels at this point. So that kind of is me.
This is a good discussion, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, one thing I just feel we need to remember is that we are Santa Monica, and the reason we're here is because we have a beautiful beach, and we're a beautiful place, and we've had many economic downturns since 1875, and it was always the beach and the tourists that brought us back every time. And we've had other industries come and go, but the beach is forever. So I'm not sure I'm ready to diss hotels, you know? We can always add an extra bonus or, you know, extra ways to streamline, but I'm just not there yet.
I just think hotel use should be on the smorgasbord of options that developers have to be able to make a deal viable.
Yeah, I think that's well said. I think we want to promote mixed use and combinations of use that help make projects viable are a good thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. So it sounds like the majority of the commission now does not want to exempt hotels from the streamlining. Council's going to do what council wants to do, and, you know, they're going to hear from lots of people before the meeting, but-
And interesting, one thing, when I was on the Sustainability Task Force, we were looking at economic models in the city, and one of the things they looked at was hotels and what it brings in and the value of it, and two negatives, there's two fairly big negatives, which, which was resource uses, usage, I should say, and wages. And it was kind of like, they were so, they were such outliers, it was, it was odd that it was for Santa Monica was, was putting so many marbles in that bucket because of those two, two things. Obviously, it brings in big revenue when it's functioning.
When it's functioning, yeah. I still think if the commission's okay, we should have a record of this conversation to council, because I think we've raised pros and cons that are maybe not, that haven't been part of the record before, and should inform the council's decision, because it's going to hear from stakeholders on this item in the future. I still think we need a, I still think we need a midterm commercial lodging category in our code so that we can actually put a buck, you know, like get our hands around how much of that kind of housing we need and try to make some money on it. But hopefully that can be included. Are we ready to move on?
Okay.
Are we done? Have we, is there anything else that anybody wants to cover?
I don't think so, but I'll check one more time.
Okay.
I think, I have a question, I want a follow-up question with, with you on ADUs, because I got a little confused in looking at the document, and there was one part where I saw that there was, for a multifamily, it was a max of eight dwelling ADUs, but then there's somewhere else on one of your slides, I saw you could do 25%, just so my, get it understanding in my head, the eight is when you're building new?
It's when you're building detached.
Detached, sorry.
So in multifamily, you get both options at the same time. You can convert existing space up to at least one or 25% of whatever the unit count is, and you can build a certain amount of detached units, assuming you have the space to do so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, clarify that.
Any other comments? So, do we, Chair, do you want to take a motion on the package of recommendations, or do we need to do that? Staff, we do need-
You do, you do need to vote on the resolutions. So there's like the big one, and then there is the resolutions about the zoning and loose map change for the parcel on-
Wilshire.
Wilshire, on Wilshire.
So, Chair, I'm going to move, staff, I'm going to move 11, I'm going to remove 11A, A, B, C, and C. I'm going to move 11A, A, B, and C as amended by the planning commission's notes and changes as outlined in the prior discussion.
Second. I have a second?
I got it.
Yes.
I think we have a, can we do a roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Chaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Tolkien?
And Sam, we're onto 11B.
All right. Okay.
Want to call it?
That was enjoyable.
I mean, we had some good stuff, yeah, like-
We actually got to debate some.
I feel like we got to say some things.
Real conversation.
We earned our stipend.
Yeah, right.
Oh, we've got some-
If I had cookies, I would give you all of them.
Okay, Tony's moving from R1 PTSD to fences and hedges PTSD.
Actually, zoning ordinance PTSD, R1. Back to fences while-
Yeah, exactly.
If you'd like one.
Yeah, no. Do we want one?
I would move that we waive the staff presentation.
I second that motion.
I mean, you're not Ross, so we don't want to- I'm sorry.
Ross, you were chopping some wood up there.
Take that in a good way.
Number of ways.
Take it in a good way.
Yeah.
Please. Or at least a joking way.
Good thing I'm not Ross.
Tony, I think what you should, what you should take from this is that your staff report was so good that no further explanation was needed.
Was Sheera as well, so I have to give credit to Sheera as well.
Okay.
Great job.
Well, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Do we have any questions of staff?
What do we?
Or go right to public comment?
Public comment.
I have questions.
Okay, well, let's go to public comments first anyways.
Okay.
Let's, Nancy Coleman?
Commissioners, staff, I am terribly concerned about hedges. I'm concerned about the expansion of hedges into R2, R3, and R4, but there are two reasons- But there are two reasons why I'm concerned. One, I lived through the fire. I was as Joshua, as Commissioner Hamilton was, two blocks from the mandatory evacuation. We watched all of it going up. And one of the things that occurred in the houses, and as you described in your earlier discussion, how the hedges, how the setbacks on the side setbacks, the state says, and Cal Fire says, we should have at least, at least five feet of any growth on the sides and the front and the backs of our houses. And we don't have that now. We don't have that on one side of our houses in R1, R2, R3, or R4. And the idea of taking more hedges and allowing whatever it is that five feet of transparent hedge is, who's defining that and who is enforcing it? I live on, in north of Montana, and I see even those hedges which are, were allowed to go higher than the 42 inches, they're at 12, 14, 16 feet. They are incendiary. And what we saw in the Palisades was incendiary hedges and trees. And what we need to do is not go forward with this proposal to increase the height of hedges, but we need to enforce the hedge height, enforce it at 42 inches. Get people and perhaps even re-look at the hedge height of those that were granted either grandfather or permitted to have higher hedges. We're not the same as we were 20 years ago in terms of climate warming. The wildfires aren't there. Cal Fire Chief came to the Noma meeting in February and said, minimum five feet from the house, minimum kinds of things to go on and have a 20-foot edge. We have high hedges all over town. And who is going to enforce that? Code enforcement doesn't enforce the current law. How are they going to do it if you increase it to all the rest of the state? I think you ought to put this off until the fire chief, the fire marshal looks through what Cal Fire says in terms of what's going on.
Before you, former Commissioner Coleman, nice to see you. My former colleague on the Social Services Commission. So forgive me, you're still, I'm assuming you're still on the Noma Board?
Yes.
Has Noma and, and you've all studied the SEPTED recommendations? And I, you've been on record on this before. I'm curious, would you support lowering the hedge height to 24 inches as the head, as the SEPTED recommendation is?
I would, I would. I, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I would. I mean, I, it's, it's terrifying. I, I try and, and talk to people about it. I have a neighbor who has 12 feet in the front, 12 feet in, around the, the front setback. You couldn't see in, it's in, you know, it could go up in a minute.
Yeah, and you wouldn't know if people were in the house to evacuate them if they were. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
As somebody who's lost a house in a fire in Malibu because the people planted too close to the house, I can tell you I'm totally in agreement. And we have no enforcement. There are 15-foot hedges on, on some houses.
Do we have other comment?
What?
Do we have anybody else waiting to speak?
Yes, we have Kay Arnold.
My name is Kay Arnold and thank you for listening to me. I have a question about hedges bisecting a property. I live on a, I live in the Wilmont area and I live at the back of the property. I'm not sure if you'd call it an ADU because there is a fourplex apartment building at the front of the property. And then about 20 years, 30 years later, my apartment, which is a ground floor apartment in front of the garages, was added in a three-bedroom apartment above mine and over the top of the garages. And there's a backyard in the, in between the two buildings and there's a front yard. And about a year ago, the property owner put up first a six-foot hedge, then after a few days, they tore that down and put up a 10-foot hedge. And it cuts across the property and separates the front building from the back building. It cuts off my sunlight somewhat. And I'm just wondering what the rules are about that? Or do I have any means of redress for that?
That's a, yeah, we're not, this, we're not able to, that's not on our agenda tonight. We can't technically talk about that. I would imagine that you should talk to the city planner about that.
Okay.
But they are in the room right now.
Oh. Later?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You, you're in the, you're with the right people.
I know that staff has put a lot of energy into this, but I think that we should.
Is that our last comment?
Do we have any other comments?
We don't have any other comments.
Okay, can we go to this, can you close the hearing?
Yeah, I think we should.
I have some questions.
Table this.
Well, let's ask questions first.
You have questions? Commissioner Fresco has questions.
Yeah.
I have a question about the survey. Did you give any information about SEPTED as part of the survey? Or were they just like cold questions?
They were just questions strictly following council's 16 item. So it was about the transparency requirement, the five feet in height.
But there was no preamble of information? That's what I wanted to know, because, all right, that was, thank you.
Could I make a motion?
Well, can, I have a lot of things to say that could affect your motion. I don't know what your motion is.
I'm happy to belay my motion, but I think, I think this is, with all the respect that the council has directed the staff to do a ton of work and you've done really careful work. And I have concerns about the survey, but I, I just don't think it's, this is not an appropriate change for us to be making right now. So that was going to be my motion.
Yeah, well, I always like to take advantage of an opportunity.
You're all yours. I won't make my motion now, I'll probably agree with you.
Can I ask a quick question first?
Yes.
And I guess this is a question for staff. I just wanted to get a brief summary of the motivation behind the change in the districts where it's limited to.
Well, who's in the, oh, we'll let him tell you.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
That was specific council direction to limit it to those R2, R3, R4 districts.
Could you, do you have a sense of what the objective was?
Well, as it's stated in the direction, it was because of some concerns that community members expressed to some of the council members about privacy and safety issues.
Privacy and, privacy and safety. Okay.
Also, yeah, anyway.
So I was, can, can we, even though you don't have enforcement, total enforcement of this, somehow get the hedges out of this so that we're not talking about flammable materials?
Well, the, the council direction included hedges in their direction, so that's why that's included in the proposed text amendments.
I mean, can we wait till Cal Fire has some direction? I mean, there's, this is a big issue.
That certainly the commission can discuss that.
I have another three houses on, on Point Doom that are going to go up next time we have a big fire because people plant up to the house.
Well, hedges are not actually, this is, doesn't regulate plants that are up against the house, this particular provision. So that's actually, this is about property line hedges.
I, I should note that outreach was also done to Office of Emergency Management and the Fire Department as well. And, you know, they did not express any concerns regarding this recommendation.
They have.
Two and six.
Just a pointed clarification on, so I see your, your sentence here that Santa Monica Fire has approved or recommended this. Did they look at just the height or did they consider the flammability issue?
They were just considering the height.
Okay.
And to be fair, it wasn't a recommendation, they just expressed they didn't really have any concerns about the five-foot height limit.
Thank you.
Did they put this in writing?
No, this was over a call.
Okay, Nina, if you have questions, comments?
I have lots of comments. I'll be quick, I can talk fast. All right, so I do not want to change the heights of the hedges in R2, R3, R4, but I would like to add staff's provisions for retaining walls that basically limits them to 42 inches. And then if the retaining wall is higher than that, then it has to be visually transparent. Railing, not a hedge because hedges are of course not transparent. You can't get the kind of transparency from a hedge that you can from a fence. I, because I'm assertive about hedges, would like to add another provision for commercial district hedges, which I lifted from what we said about hedges in the Bergamot Plan, which I thought was an excellent program. And I don't know how to share that. I think I sent it to Tony last time.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fresco, can I just pause? That is not in the scope of the ROI.
We can only talk about R2, R3, R4?
I mean, that is, yeah, that's.
So we didn't, yeah, see, when we talked about this, I suggested that we open up the whole thing, but then we didn't do the ROI, did we?
Yeah, the, the scope of the inquiry here, if you will, is really R2, R3, R4 zones only.
Well, in that case, it's very simple, that we just add the retaining wall thing and call it a day. And I don't think it's safe. I don't, I think that people think they're safe. I think that people need a lot of education, communities that have, that, there are lots of communities that have lots of information and brochures and things to educate people so they move past this false sense of security that they have behind their hedges. I think that our city could do, we, people say we have a crime problem and they talk about all of these things. And the statistics that came up from staff was that 44% of front yards are not open. And that might have a lot to do with why we have problems. In Ocean Park in the seventies, they had the highest crime rate, one of the highest juvenile crime rates in the country. And they got a big federal block grant. They started Comunitas and the Ocean Park Community Organization and a system of neighborhood watch groups and public education on securing windows and doors and all that kind of stuff. And now look at Ocean Park. And that should be our approach. So, you know, we talk a lot about how it's not safe in Santa Monica and we need more police and more police, but what we need is hedge enforcement and community education on public safety and neighborhood watch. And I think that would be a really great thing for us to recommend that city council consider instead of doing this unsafe thing, that by the way, if you need privacy, you get drapes. If you want to have a birthday party outside, we have tons of great parks in the city. If you want to be protected from noise, a hedge isn't going to do it. You should ask a sound engineer, it doesn't help. If you want more light, you definitely don't need a hedge. So it's just not going to do the things that people think it's going to do. And I think we really need to send that message to council in a really clear way and not just say, no, we don't want to do it. So that's my motion, I guess, is to make those suggestions along with recommending the existing ordinance with the retaining wall provision.
From what I, I see fences and hedges are used interchangeably.
Say that again?
In this, the staff report and the recommendation, the fences and hedges are kind of used interchangeably. So you want to create a separate, like hedge only?
No, I didn't say that. I didn't, I'm, I don't think we should change anything, 42 inches in the front. I mean, the walls and the hedges are already separated in the back, eight feet, 12 feet, leave it like that.
But you were, but you were recommending the retaining wall issue, which was to allow it to go up.
Right, but no hedges on top of a retaining wall that's already over 42 inches. It would be a railing.
Any structure.
Huh?
You said hedge, but did you mean hedge and fence?
You want 75% transparency.
I want a railing.
You're only going 42 inches, sorry, never mind, never mind.
No, I'm talking about on top of a retaining wall that's taller than 42 inches. I want a railing, not a hedge or a fence.
Right, and that's fine, and I'm supportive of that.
Okay.
So do you, so I'm sorry, just for clarity, so I'm just looking at the language that, you know, is in front of you is, you would like, you, you are supportive or recommending the retaining walls required by the building code shall not count towards the maximum height limit, right? Retaining walls required by the building code shall be exempt from the visual transparency requirements. And so then you're okay then with a decorative fence above that retaining wall, like up to what, whatever the current standards are, but it has to be visually transparent. Like it can't be, you're saying on that retaining wall, no fence, sorry, no, no wall or hedge above that retaining wall?
So on page A.
I'm saying a railing, not a wall, not a hedge or a fence.
Not flammable.
Tony, can you put up your?
A railing.
Because there's, for retaining walls required by the building code above 42 inches, a guardrail is permitted, only a guardrail is on top of the retaining wall, only the max, minimum extent necessary.
Right.
And they have to be 50% visually transparent, yeah. So I think you're striking three?
Yeah.
Little four, three?
She's striking three, she's moving four to three, and she's making it 75% visually transparent, not 50%.
Okay.
And also, just to be clear as well, this would still only apply to the R2, R3, R4 districts, given the scope of the ROI that was presented.
If that's all we can do, then that's all that it applies to.
But we are cutting B1, B2, B3, we're cutting everything other than the retaining walls.
Right.
We're not changing fence and hedge height rules. So B, B4 becomes B1, right? This is, do you want to see?
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I'm, what I'm looking at is there, because there, the way, since we're not changing the code and it doesn't currently separate, it just says residential districts. So if we're just going to add the retaining wall provision in residential districts, I mean, does it have to only apply to, it does?
Yeah, because of our hands are.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a motion there?
Yes.
If, if you would like to give a recommendation outside of the motion for further study of broader applicability of this, you may. But, but based on the ROI, it's just.
Right, well, we would like the retaining wall recommendation that is if it's over 42 inches, any required guardrail is a 75% transparent railing. And we would recommend that that apply to all residential districts.
Are you cool with this last language here? Notwithstanding the height of fences, walls, and hedges within three feet of the retaining wall, it should be measured from the top of the building code retaining wall? The height of the, the measurement of the height of the retaining wall? And the existing national grades shall not be adjusted?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just making sure. Okay. I'll second that motion. Could, do you want us to do? Could, do you want us to do the direction as a separate motion?
Yeah. If it's part of your recommendation, I mean, you, technically, you're, you are adopting the, if I understand, you are adopting the, um, resolution, sorry, it's been a long night, adopting the resolution with the modifications, and also giving the separate recommendation to the council that the whole, um, that these rules apply to the whole city, which would require the process to start all over again under the zoning ordinance.
Right. But to be clear, what's in front of us on the screen, we're dropping B1, B2, B3, and and B4, 1, 2, and 3. I'm sorry, B4, 3. We're keeping B4, 1, we're keeping B4, 2, and we're keeping B4, 4, except it's going to be 75% visually transparent.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on us. Yeah, I had a same, I had the same question.
No, no, the, the guardrail.
The guardrail.
Guardrail. Well, I didn't bring them.
I think you're...
Well, it's, can be any kind of thing that they can design, but it just can't approach a fence.
You just can't, so you don't fall off the side of the retaining wall.
If, if I may, um, I think there might be an issue with striking 3, because then it leaves a gap as to how we deal with retaining walls that are less than 42 inches in height, and if there's a fence on top. I think to be consistent with the idea of not raising the height limit, but allowing for the retaining wall changes, I think in number 3, we should just change the five feet to 42 inches.
For retaining walls required by the building code of 42 inches or less in height, fences, freestanding walls, and hedges up to 42 inches in height are permitted on top of the retaining wall?
Yes.
Any combination of retaining wall, fence, you can drop the second sentence, because there's no...
We can, but I think it, it allows for a, a combination of retaining wall and fence or wall up to 42 inches height, in height, looking at both structures, to be solid, to be consistent with any fence or wall that can be solid up to 42 inches in height to be in with, and then just requires anything on top of that to be visually transparent, transparent. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, but I'm going to go, I just got it, I have a retaining wall that's 42, 42 inches. All I get on top of that is a guardrail. Is that correct?
If it's up to 42 inches in height, you can have a fence, wall, or hedge up to 42 inches on top of that.
Right, okay, so I don't think I really want to support that, because if you're walking around the street, and there's a 42-inch, the sidewalk here, there's a 42-inch retaining wall for the property, now they're going to get 42 inches on top of it.
Yeah, that's not what we want.
Now we're back at the five feet.
Right, that's what we don't want.
Right. Yeah, the, the way it was worded was to basically not penalize anyone for having a retaining wall, but I, I understand your point. But it was to kind of reset where the height is taken from, so...
Well, whatever, well, the retaining wall is the retaining wall, and we're not worried about the retaining wall. If it's over 42 inches, then they just get a guardrail.
Right.
If it's 40, if it's 40 inches, they get two inches of fence, and then they get a guardrail.
Okay, so in that case, if you were to strike 3, I would suggest in number 4, we take out the reference of above 42 inches in the height, and just keep it to any retaining walls, only a guardrail is permitted on top.
Yeah.
I have a question. So, just as, as it's currently written, if I wanted to put, like, a five-foot-high chain link fence across the front of my property, is that allowed?
As written, yes.
Yeah, okay.
As long as it's, meets the visual transparency above 42 inches in height.
Sure, because it's a good old-fashioned chain link fence, yeah, okay.
But not as we've amended it.
Correct.
As written, that was my...
So, then let me, I'm going to suggest a slight tweak to 4. Keep the language for retaining walls required by the building code above, but swap those numbers. For retaining walls required by the building code above 24 inches in height, only a guardrail is permitted on top of the retaining wall. That is consistent with SEPTED. SEPTED says, go 24, go 24 inches. So, let, don't, don't, um, don't, let, let people have their 24-inch guard, retaining wall, and if it's below that, let them do what they want up to 42 inches, but if they're at 24 inches or, or more, then you only get a guardrail. Is that okay?
That makes sense. You, you're not going to take away their 42 inches.
Right. We're saying at 24 inches or above, the guard, the, the retaining wall might be bigger than that. If they're required to put in a guardrail, it has to be transparent. Anything, any retaining wall bigger than 24 inches, the only thing that goes on top of it is a transparent guardrail.
That would be...
You say 24.
No, the way Tony said it before...
No, I mean 24.
Twenty, like a two-foot?
The way Tony said it before was better.
And also, if, that would be less permissive than what the code currently allows.
Yeah, okay. 24 inches is a trip hazard more than anything.
If there's a retaining wall, then you put in a guardrail.
Oh, I see what you're saying, of any size?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So then how would you rewrite 4, Tony?
Can you remember what you said it was good?
Yes.
I mean, isn't what you want just a guardrail on top of any retaining wall at 75% transparency? We're not going to rewrite this, we just, we know what you want, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just trying to keep, I was just trying to be more permissive, and instead of saying any retaining wall, I was going to say that was going to require that of the retaining walls that are bigger than 24 inches, that's all.
Okay.
I thought that was more permissive, not less.
Well, it's too complicated, and I, and it sounds like, yeah.
Okay, fine. Fine, yep.
But we understand, I think, what you're, what you're getting at.
In general, we're not really in favor of this.
We tried to say that a few months ago. Nobody heard us.
Right.
Ready to vote? Yeah.
So, what's the consensus?
We're voting. We have a motion.
So, you don't need it, yeah.
Five, we still got the five.
We're just going to keep the existing. And we're just doing some work on retaining walls. Sorry, folks. Thank you, Shira, thank you, Tony.
All those in favor?
Hi.
We don't need a road call?
I'm sorry?
Do we need a road roll call?
It's a recommendation.
It is a, but it's a resolution, it's a text amendment.
Okay. No, no, no one opposed.
Cool, thanks, great.
Thank you.
Lovely.
Tony, I'm sure your presentation would have been great.
Okay, let's, let's adjourn before 11 so that we don't have to take a vote to adjourn before, after 11.
It was exciting.
Because after 11, we have to take a special motion.
It's legislative, we still tend to...
I am.
We adjourned? We're done, all right.